Board of Trustees special meeting to order. And we have all, we have four trustees here. Regina is not here. But the first item on the agenda is the presentation of the draft of our strategic plan by Library Strategies. And we can go around and introduce ourselves to you guys. And then it would be lovely if you would, well, here she is. Here's Regina. And it would be great if you guys are going to do that. Vanessa, would you like to start?
My name is Vanessa Robinson. I'm a first year trustee. Katie Blank.
A year.
A number of years. Judy Meyer, just about the same number of years.
Michelle Odison, first year trustee.
I'm Regina McCree. We'll show the elite.
And Amy Roden, director.
Lindsay Escarpola, our assistant director.
I'm Janelle Sales, the business manager.
Hey, your turn.
It's nice to meet all of you. Did we, did we hit everyone, Amy?
Yes.
Great. I'm Elaine Hopkins. I am the Director of Library Strategies Consulting Group. It's the consulting group of the Friends of the St. Paul Public Library. It's truly been a pleasure to work with Amy and the Community Library Network Steering Committee on this plan. And I'll pass things over to Nick and then Jennifer.
Okay, I'll go first. Nick Demassis, one of the co-consultants on this project. And I'm also a library director at Bulleit Public Library in Wisconsin. Prior to that, I was in the Twin Cities at several, a director of library and deputy director at a couple libraries there as well. So, and as Elaine said, it has been a great pleasure working with all of you. And having Amy ride us around the network and get to know the area and all the other members of the committee. So, looking forward to this, thanks.
I'm Jennifer Patterson. I am another consultant on this project. Again, it's been great fun to get to know the network and to be part of this project. I am also an assistant director at the Everett Public Library in Washington State. And previously was the director of the State Library of Oregon and have worked at several other public libraries in the Northwest as well. It's a pleasure being here this afternoon.
Okay, you guys, you guys have the floor.
All right. Elaine, did you want to start off at all or?
Um, I think that, yeah, I think that we've got, once I share the screen on it, we've got the background. So, I think that, let me get that up.
Right. And while Elaine's doing that, you know, as many of you know that we're, have been involved in this process all along. It's a very iterative process. The first five or six steps is really us listening and gathering the information. But, you know, the strategic plan is not just, not just a transcript of all those conversations. So, we bring our own expertise and experience to this as well. So, what comes out then is we have five goals for this plan. And, and again, it was based on community survey, staff survey, one-to-one interviews with, you know, certain individuals, community leaders. And as I said, getting to know the network physically by being there. There was a community retreat. So, lots of data goes into this, lots of conversations. Strategic plan is both art and science. And so, what we try to do is capture the voice of the community, but also see if we can push it, push it a little bit too. And because your goal in the strategic plan is to move forward. And so, that's also ours to give some nudges in certain areas. So, please feel free to comment on any of these goals, any of the strategies as we go along. So, basically, that's what I covered there with the background. Very, very, very high level. Each of these goals, I always kind of have a key word. And so, for goal one, it's programs. For goal two, it's partners. For goal three, a couple of them remove barriers in the customer experience. And for goal four is awareness and engagements are kind of there. We're getting into, the first three are what do we do? The fourth one is how do we make sure everybody knows what we're doing and that we're highly visible? And then the fifth one, fifth one is really about staff. The word here is infrastructure, but we're really talking, and capacity. And what we're talking about there is kind of the behind-the-scenes things. Once, once we, everybody knows what we're doing and we're doing what we're doing, who's doing it? And that's staff. And how do we make sure that they are motivated as well as the board, et cetera, et cetera, policies and such? So, that's very high level. The first four are very front-facing. The fifth one is again, more kind of behind-the-scenes a little bit. So, now we'll go through each one of these goals at a time. Goal one, deliver unique and responsive programs driven by community needs and interests. And needs and interests are both very important. So, what does the community need as you look around to help move the community forward? But also, what are people just interested in? And, and that plays an important role as well. And so, the strategies for that one, the first one, expand programs for adults and seniors and explore more intergenerational activities and learning. And some of that comes through, we had comments and some of the information we got was adult programs between 18 and 50. They wanted some, some more, so expanding it, more of those, but also intergenerational. And what we heard a little bit is about, you know, seniors can be intimidated. Usually seniors and very young are the sweet spots for libraries. That's the two ends, not only of the life spectrum, but also that's really where libraries, they're there when they're very young. And then they come back as they're older and retire now, okay? So, I'm sure that's pretty intuitive to you. In between, there's also a range. And some of those adults are saying, we want more programs, but also the intergenerational. And there too, you know, when you start to get into STEM and things like that, how can mentoring, more learning and mentor through, through mentoring? How can we get some programs doing that? So, sort of lastly on that senior, there was a few comments about seniors being intimidated in the library. Some of that's from, you know, there's those kids and teens and that. So, intergenerational programming and activities might be a way to sort of bridge that gap a little bit. And kind of get each of the generations familiar with each other and working together. Develop programs, oh, by the way, when we get to the end of each of these, then we can, I'll open it up for each of these goals and I'll open up for questions. So, we'll just kind of go through. Develop programs around immediate community needs and populations. Again, there's that needs unhoused and also homeless. Kind of different in, in your community, the unhoused is kind of a significant population. Whereas many other communities are kind of just looking at those experiencing homelessness. You also have the issue of the rapid increase in values and people finding themselves without housing. Adult literacy, parenting, workforce, digital literacy, those kinds of community needs and those specific populations. Effectively engage teens as both participants and creators of programming and events. Especially from our educators in your, in the Community Library Network is middle school and high school students is where we heard quite a bit. That the library does very good with the young, but there's a kind of a gap there when it comes to the middle school and high school. So, really kind of reconnecting. And those schools are also, those educators and organizations are also very willing to partner. And so, then it's finding where's the commonality, where are both? You really went through partnerships, as we'll talk about. It has to be mutually beneficial. And so, certainly, we were hearing from the education side, middle and high school students, teen advisory boards, kind of developing some of those things. Develop more programs for families to learn and discover together. More events within ongoing programs. So, there's some really great programs. They love it, but they would also like to see maybe some more programs within those or more, more sessions within those programs. Summer reading program for all ages and just kind of continuing that. And you have a, you have a nice program going there. There's some kind of music, historical, those, that kind of programming that the whole family can engage in. Strengthen programs for the homeschool community at the library and with outreach. You have a strong homeschool community, many communities do. Sometimes they are less visible and sometimes they're more visible, depending on whether they are kind of working on their own or whether they're working together as a group. But libraries have a great potential to be able to serve those, serve those needs. Just one small example would be microscopes. Maybe all the families can't afford microscopes, maybe they don't need them, but can they check them out from the library? Come to use them at the library? Are there library programs around that? So, just those kinds of things and really being very attentive to the homeschool, the homeschool community. So, both in the libraries, but also taking it in the outreach. And we'll talk about the vehicles and that. You have some really great vehicles, conduits to get out into the community. Expand evening and weekend offerings to meet varied schedules. So, that's kind of makes sense. I'm sure to all of you, as you say, oh yeah, both, maybe both parents are working all day and all the programs are during the day. So, how, how do you start to expand some of those programs and make sure they're in the evening and on weekends? Utilize community experts and build community connection through community-wide programming. And here we're getting into really kind of some interesting things. And again, community building. Programs that promote community civic education. That's very important. Help, helping to identify misinformation, having a role in that. And North Idaho Reads was, was also commented on as kind of that, how do you build community and get people kind of working together around some of these educational things? So, I will stop there and take any questions. And certainly Jennifer or Elaine, if you have anything to add as you hear me going through, go ahead and jump in. Any questions?
Okay. Okay. Terrifying on each of these goals. The list that you have, is that in priority in any sense or is it just a collection of ideas?
I'm sorry, say that again?
On your strategic plan goals?
Yeah.
When, in the list, are they in priority or is it just a random collection of concepts?
Okay, yeah, great question. What it is, is it's kind of a very front, very visible to behind-the-scenes. So, sort of as I described, one through five are moving kind of into behind-the-scenes. Four is the, the marketing and that kind of thing. So, there too, that's, that sort of spans that gap of what's happening internally, but also what people are seeing. So, programs, very, very front and center for the library. Partnerships, that's all second thing. So, that's the order. But on, I will say that you don't want to focus on goal one and we're not going to do two and three and four until we get goal one done. It's not, it's certainly not meant in that way. Is that?
The follow-up is within the goal list, is there a priority?
Yeah, that, I would say that is even less so. There, there, in some of these, there is sort of a, okay, how do we order that? But it, there too, again, it would not be a hard, you have to do bullet one before you do bullet two and that kind of thing. And then I'll, I'll add, this is the, the strategic plan is high level for the board to approve. And then what's going to happen is the staff is going to do an implementation plan, which is saying that first bullet, expand programs for adults and seniors. This would just be the board saying, yes, that is what we want to see. And then you turn to the staff and say, make it so and show us how you're going to make it so. And then that is where the staff will have more bullets, let's just say, under each of these bullets. How are they going to do it? We're going to have this specific intergenerational program. And that's, and that, and I say that because also, that's also how your priorities, the staff's priorities will start to rise by, as they start to say, how do we make each of these bullets come alive? And they're going to start to go, okay, we can, we're already doing that one, so let's keep that one moving down the road. Okay, well, this one seems to be more immediate than need. And so, the prioritization is really going to come from the staff as they're working through their implementation plan.
And then the follow-up to that, of course, is the budgeting to make it all happen.
Sure.
Be sure that we understand as our staff comes back to us, probably put numbers beside it because that'll help me focus on which ones we do and which order.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. You can't do, you can't do things without, or many things you can't do without the funding for it. And in the implementation plan, there will also be kind of a timeline. This is when we're going to start, because remember, this is 2023 to 2025. So, that also needs to kind of be figured out by staff. If we're going to do these five things and reach of these bullets, when are we going to do it? We're not going to all start it in the fall. So, then they'll start to put out the timeline. And then there's a category for the budget needs and then also a category for who's in charge of it. Not necessarily who has to do it, but who is the one that will be reporting, say, when the board says, what about these? That's the person that knows what's going on with that specific tactic or action. And I, and I will say too, you know, budgeting, that's part of us listening in our own experience as library directors and, and leaders. And that is, we're not, we have to also, we're always cognizant of the budget costs. And in your strategic plan with the partnerships, a lot of times that isn't a huge expense. That's finding someone on each, in each organization that wants to engage, engage to, on whatever topic or issue it is. Because you can have all the money in the world, but if you don't want to talk to each other, then, then it doesn't matter either. So, it's really finding those, those individuals and those partners. Any other questions on goal one? Okay, great, great question. And so, goal two, engage strategic partners to leverage shared experience and enhance community services. So, the first one is collaborate with early learning providers. And you can already start to think, early learning providers that are in the community to create a well-coordinated educational ecosystem. And that, again, is underlying that partnerships, whether it's officials, public officials that are funding the library or organizations or private donations. The one thing that they don't want to hear is if they say, well, that, what you're doing and asking money for sounds a lot like what this other organization is doing. How are you guys working together? Oh, are they doing that? I didn't know that. That, that, that's not a good thing. And it isn't eliminating duplication, it's just making sure that there's coordination. Because you can poke at the same problem from, from different organizations and from different directions and that. But you have to at least be coordinated and understand what each other's doing. So, partners, partnering is very, very important. So, that's what that is, early learn providers. And that's what the ecosystem is, everyone knowing, getting to know what they're doing so you can be most effective. And one possibility, there is a list. And this is where, to get your question of cost, this is really just staff time, is create a list of community resources and services in terms of early learning providers. So, that's just staff time to start to create that inventory of saying, who's, who's doing what? Who's in the community or communities, et cetera? And then, of course, the school district, very interested in partnering and how it can be mutually beneficial. Early learning collaborative, latchkey kids, these are just better, there was a comment about better collaboration between the Community Library Network and Core Delane. And I, you know, I, I know that's, has all kinds of issues in that, but that's another thing is why are you partnering or why you're not? Either one is fine, just as long as you're able to explain and justify it. And then also daycare centers are another great early learning provider to be partnering with. And just sort of a note is anytime I'm saying do this and do that, that is not to say that it's not already happening. You have a lot of really interesting, exciting, innovative things going on already. So, this is a way to sort of capture that and then look forward through the same lens. Develop programs around immediate community needs. Oh, I'm sorry, I went backwards. Let me turn my page. Collaborate with workforce providers to offer services and resources that are point of need and affirming. So, point of need is a little different than libraries saying, this is what we think, this is what we want to do versus what is the need and immediately that that need occurs. So, being responsive to it and able to respond in the moment rather than just laying some things out if something should happen in the future. So, basic life skills, job fair, workforce. It was talking about how do you get graduates to stay? And how can you partner not only with the school district, but also the higher education? And kind of create pathways that people can see, okay, if I go here, 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 and here, and then there's a job at the end of that. So, just kind of creating some pathways to get to retain people in the community. And then North Idaho College, also very interested in partnering. And there too, the list of community resources and services on these, with, among these kinds of partners. Collaborate with social service providers to get vital resources and/or information to those who are in need. So, we had, we had early learning providers, we had workforce providers, and now we're talking about social service providers. And same kind of thing, the list of community resources, get that inventory, who's doing what? And now, how can we partner together? And here we're talking about the house list, the unhoused, the homeless. There's that Alice organization, a lot of comments around Alice being a really great conduit for some, some different programming and partnering. The diaper bank, other services for struggling population. And of course, as all libraries are dealing with around issues of mental health and, and how libraries can be responsive to that. And then lastly, engage senior populations across the system to provide mentoring and programs within their branch communities. So, whether that's volunteers, the retired population, or through something like the Library Foundation. And that's, you know, it, it's not a simple thing. It's probably was about 10, 15 years ago in libraries, oh, with all the boomers retiring, we're going to have these, you know, highly skilled, highly educated people retiring with their MBAs and they'll want to volunteer and they'll want to use their MBA to come into the library. And if we could just get them in, we could do all these things and that. And guess what happened? When people do retire with an MBA, they go, I really don't want to use that. I kind of want to just, you know, if anything, I want to, I want to, you know, if not shelf books, I want to just do something that's a little less, you know, intense. If I wanted to use my marketing skills, I might have just stayed and keep working and make money. So, so that was one of the things. So, it's not as simple as, oh, we got these hu, you know, highly skilled individuals. It's really about the interest in pulling them in and what is it they want to do now in this phase of their life, not in their past phase. But there's a lot of potential is there, there as well. Any questions around goal two?
I have a question. What is, and you explained it some, but what is a, what are workforce providers? Who are they? Who are those people?
Well, you have, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I think you've got this.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, in different communities, whether it was workforce development, it's the services for those that, whether it's you find yourself in unemployment, how do you get lifted back out of that? And whether it would be through resume, whether it's job searching, all those, all those kinds of different things. But is any of those organizations within the community that deal with workforce? And it can be those that are out of a job, but it can also be just simply skilling people up to the next level. So, someone had mentioned the Envision Center in Canada seemed to them to be a really good example of maybe some things to be learned from there and that. So, that, that, that's, as far as specific names, I, just because I don't have it in my notes right now, you know, every area is different. I mean, Amy, you can chime in if you want. But it's any of those workforce providers that are there to help lift people in whatever situation they're in that's work-related or career-related.
Like, yeah, the unemployment agency is the first thing. Is that, that or anything that would be any other social service agencies that might be helping people in terms of their employment is what you're suggesting for? Okay, that sounds, I just did, I wanted to be clear.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why, again, with that, to answer that question really fully is not for me or anyone else, just to name three. And that's why I say to take that inventory of the community, because everyone's going to find, one, one is going to lead to another, is going to lead to another. And that even happened just in, in our one-to-one conversations and some others is, is you follow, follow along. And then as you work through this, you'll have a nice inventory of all of those organizations. And you'll probably be surprised, staff will be surprised as they make those calls and connections of who they think is the no-brain partner and who they might not have thought of that all of a sudden comes forward and there is the great, you know, that's where the real, the real work is ending up going to be done. Anything else on goal two?
I guess I have a question. You keep mentioning services for the unhoused and homeless. And I was wondering if the survey results indicated that that's a big need in our area? Because this is supposed to be tailored for our specific community, right?
Right. Yes. And that's where a lot of it was coming out with, as prices rise and real estate is more expensive and where are the jobs and people moving in, just that, that whole tension that's kind of happening there is people are finding themselves out of housing. So, they're not your traditional, traditional homeless or those experiencing homelessness, homelessness that might be a little more long-term is they're finding themselves just out of a house and for the, for the right, for the reasons of rising prices. And we did hear that, I heard that in my, and Jennifer, you can weigh in too. But I heard that in, in a number of the one-to-one conversations. When I say one-to-one, what we're talking to our community leaders, those that are in director, executives, you know, those kinds of positions. And talking about that being a real need. Does anybody that's on, on your end there, does anybody like say, I disagree with that or I've never heard of the how, the unhoused being an issue here?
I would also add, yes, and I hear it's an issue. Also, would you define the Alice initials, what they mean, asset, limited income, constrained? B.
Employed. Employed.
Employed, thank you.
And that's a specific task force that's here, but I mean, that acronym is used kind of.
But it's active, it's just community at this time and dealing with that issue.
Yeah, and I think what was coming through there is, is really the, in particular, at least to start with, is the library director engaging with that. And obviously, Amy, I think Amy, you're coming up on your one-year anniversary here. So, you know, she's certainly aware of that task force and that. But from a number of people, they said, you know what? What you're talking about, that seems like a really good place for the library director to engage.
So, Amy absolutely knows about this because we freaked out trying to find a place for her last year for temporary housing. It was really hard. And so, yeah, unhoused is right.
Right. And I was just going to say, I think the term unhoused, it probably applies more to this area than home, those experiencing homeless. Because it's those that might just be without a house for like three weeks because they came here, they can't get in yet, or they're on a rental waiting list. And we're seeing a number of those here at the library.
Yeah, thanks. And that's why when you say it's specific to each community, these strategic plans, obviously, there's some commonality because there's commonality across every community. But unhoused came up over and over here. And I, you know, I've, I've heard the term, you know, I know, certainly know what it means, but heard it in other strategic planning sessions, but never close to what we hear, heard here.
I follow up on that in a minute because what you think about, our system has various communities. So, I think we'll find differences within the community also. In Core Delane, it's between Missoula, which has a terrible time, Spokane, which has a terrible time. What we have in the transportation corridor means we often are an intermediary spot in the process.
Yeah, and I think, and I think you'd probably agree that what's hap- Yeah. And I think, and I think you'd probably agree that what's happening within one community either right away starts to affect another community, where, you know, spills in different directions and that, or eventually might. And so you have this great advantage as, as a network across communities to really kind of say, where is the immediate need? So you can, you're not only looking community wide, but you're also looking within each of the communities within the community library network. And, and that's, that's some of the work behind the scenes to say, where do we need to focus these on this? So it gets to priorities. There may be a more of a priority in one community for two or three of these bullets and in another community and maybe one of the others. That's what keeps our job fun and your job as board member. The goal three, remove barriers to library services and improve customer experience. And barriers, all kinds of barriers and, but the goal, of course, is to improve the customer experience. So increase efforts to make library cards ubiquitous and easily obtained. So one thing that libraries are doing now, and, and there was a couple of comments on this as well, is partnering with schools to make ID cards, also library cards is what some comments were there. And there's privacy issues around that, but there are ways to work through it. If both the school district and the library want to work through it, they can. Sometimes it brings in the state. Like the state library or, or the department of education, just making sure that the privacy issues are, are being, you know, followed in terms of individual information and that. But you can, those can be worked through if that is a priority. Sign up campaigns and then online sign up and renewal and just making sure that those are very easy. Empower patrons to confidently access and use library services through greater awareness. So there we are, goal four, just knowing that this, that there, there's these kinds of services and resources available, the training, and that a lot of that comes down to goal five, the staff being able to train people very simply, easily. If I'm a staff member and I don't know how to use that thing or download that app, then I'm probably not going to introduce it to the patron. And so making sure staff are trained and then also usability. Is it also something that is usable or is it old technology? Is it not compatible, those kinds of things? So redesign the website to improve usability, supported self-service. That's just kind of a general concept that says each one of you should be able to walk into any one of your libraries, get what you need and walk out without ever needing any staff assistance. Yet, if you ever need staff assistance at any point along that journey, then staff is there, they're attentive and they're anticipating your needs. So that's what self-checks are. That's what holds out in the library that you can grab your own hold, all that kind of stuff plays into the supported self-service. Staff assistance with technology, I already gave an example of that, making sure everyone's well-trained. Then it's a place of learning and growth. That is removing a barrier so people, that people know this is the place where I'm going to go to, to learn and grow. And then reaching out to new residents was, is another possibility, right? Working through real estate agents, whatever it might be, right when they move in, the library somehow is able to just connect with them right away. Deploy a variety of vehicles and technology to provide resources and services to CLN's customers located in its more rural areas. So you have a nice fleet of vehicles and a nice variety of vehicles. So this isn't saying buy something else or buy more or that. You, the staff may determine that that's what's needed, but this is really just saying, you got all this stuff or you can use a variety of vehicles. Great, you already have them. And now how are you going to be able to, what are you going to do with it? And then get it, especially getting out to the more rural areas. And so the sprinter vans, the steam bus, regular bus, the bicycles, very cool. They can go to kind of local farmers markets or whatever community events. And then the issue of hotspots and cell service and, you know, talking also with some of the educators, they say, yeah, we give everyone an iPad, but if you don't have a very good cell, if you don't have internet, then you can't really use them without that. Okay, then we give a hotspot. And yet if you don't have good cell service that. So I don't know how like common that is, what the saturation of that kind of, of barrier is, but it came up over and over and over and it is a barrier. And that's something that, again, that the staff will have to think about how to provide that.
I'll jump in on that one because that has been a statewide issue in Idaho and particularly in Northern Idaho. There's a coalition with the business community statewide organization called Idaho Business for Education. And they gathered up and worked with Hewlett Packard to get access, either increase the broadband, pay for broadband to get into rural areas, tip into Silver Valley, which would be our Pinehurst area and further north. And that's an ongoing struggle here in Northern Idaho. So I think the recent partnering, we haven't had time to get to yet, but worth doing.
And, and there too, even that, you know, the library's not going to go and lay fiber, but others are looking at that, at the state level, at the regional level, whatever it might be. There are people looking at that and how do you, how do you deal with exactly what you just said? And the library should have a seat at the table in those discussions. Doesn't have to be leading them, but it should have a seat at the table and to try to help kind of ameliorate that, those situations. Offer, offer convenient services. Let me see where I, offer convenient services and responsive spaces for a variety of work, play, learn lifestyles. And so for there, you know, is it convenient hours? Again, we mentioned about if people, the, the workday, what kind of programming and everything else, the space is open or the library is open after the workday, if that's what's needed. And I will say that, you know, we didn't, it's not like within our, you know, purview to find out, survey everybody and find out what the hours should be, but that would become one of the action items that the staff would do. They would say, survey the public to find out, you know, if our hours need to go later, if they need to go earlier and those kinds of things. So that's an example of a kind of action. Doesn't cost a lot and, but it's going to be helped to guide you on what your hours should be and that. Curbside holds pickup, you know, that was a COVID, came out during the COVID era and all libraries really picked up on that. And now the question is, and in particular, this service is one that libraries really are saying, how, how can we hang on to that? How can we continue to have that extra service to our patrons in an ongoing basis? And some have done it with a drive of window and some have done it by maintaining what they're doing, whatever it might be, but trying to say, how can we continue to remove barriers and improve customer service by going to the customer and just making it that much easier? Parking at some of the libraries was a comment, pretty much always is, but that was also a comment for some. Outdoor community use spaces, that, that's, there too, it's not that it wasn't done before in libraries and, and certainly in some of your libraries, but there too, from COVID, get outside and you can have programs. If you're inside, we don't do programs inside and those, and those kinds of things. So really looking at the outside as an extension of the building as much as possible. Yes, there's winter, but in the, when the climate allows is trying to do as much programming outdoors as possible. The, the buildings, the facilities are for many people, just a warm space. And the reaction to that can be, we don't want them in here. They, they, you know, they come in, they have their back, you know, their bags and they sit over there and maybe they fall asleep. Or it can be looking at it as this is, this is vital to them and this is their kind of respite for a few hours a day and that. But libraries are vital for even just providing a warm space at times. Spaces for tutors, workspace and a playpen, looking forward, people that now are doing remote, how can you start to, are there some ways that the community library network can start to be more accommodating to that? And so one is a desk where they're working at and there's a little playpen around that desk so that they can have some time to do that while their toddler is there. And safe and inclusive spaces, outside groups using the library, that is a growth area for libraries, is that we're not the gatekeepers, but just opening up and getting those outside groups to come in and use it. It's their public space and then promoting it as a gathering space. And some of these examples, some of those are, are ours, but most of these examples that I'm giving came up through the, in particular, the community surveys and, and the one-to-one and the community retreat. So I'm not saying things and just throwing them at you, saying, this is what I've learned along the way. These are, these have arisen from all of the data and the feedback we got. Offer learning technologies that are up to date and encourage creativity. So maker spaces, studio, you know, if someone wants to make an album and you can do that with really just a computer now. And then is there a studio that you can kind of create for that? Upgraded technology anywhere that it might be glitchy. That was one term that was used, glitchy. So, but you have, you also have a strong technology individual and department and awareness and competency and all that on your staff. So, but that, just keep that in mind, upgrading, make sure the technology can, can be upgraded. And that is a cost. That often is a budget cost and ongoing one. So you always have to factor that in. Curate collections that are current and relevant to all residents of the community library network service area. So just kind of repeating that, relevant, current, all subjects and topics. People like browsing and, you know, that's not going to go away anytime soon. Collections may get smaller as networks get larger. So there's more sharing happening and everybody doesn't have to have the exact same copy of an item that only gets checked out once. Yes, you want multiple copies of your Patterson's and that, but if it's an item that's only going to be checked out once, you don't need that in every single library or across the state. So as the networks, statewide networks even get more collaborative, then collections are going to continue to get smaller. They're not going to go away, but just making sure that they're relevant and they're current. Longer loan, loan periods was a comment that you just, that's an internal question of whether you think you should loan items longer or not and which items. Digital resources and collections to homeschoolers. And that's something that a lot of libraries talk about and say, yeah, well, we don't do textbooks and we don't do that. And we don't do curriculum and that kind of thing. But you know what? If that's what your community needs, how do you find a way to kind of balance both the costs? Because it can be very expensive for curriculum books and that versus trying to make sure that you're responsive and relevant to certainly a significant community like the homeschoolers. E-books are, ebooks are the wave of the future. Students get Chromebooks. But again, that isn't saying that, you know, the print collections are going to disappear, but electronic and digital resources are becoming more and more available. And some people like it, some people dove into it and backed away from it and all that. But that is, again, that's, that's your finger on the pulse of what your community wants and needs and really through partners. What are the other partners doing for the, the various populations? A library of things is, you have a strong library of things and there, like in many libraries, that's going to continue to grow. If you want to, with the library of things, I would let Amy kind of list those, but I'm guessing you probably know what that is. It's not the books, it's not the DVDs, it's not the CDs, it's anything, it can be cake pans or anything else that people more and more are needing. I know in Northern Wisconsin, there's a few libraries that have, like in their library of things, have chainsaws and things like that, because that's what that community finds really valuable. So any questions on goal three?
I, I have a quick question, just actually about the library of things. Do you know how common that is in the nation?
It's, it's, I would say, I would say it's very common right now. The size of the collections are where you'll see the differences. So how, when they kind of came into it and how fast they've just adopted that as, as, as part of doing business. I hear every now and then, well, no, we're really just books or CDs. Obviously, to me, that's totally wrong attitude. Snowshoes, bike locks, any bike pumps, whatever it might be, should be able to be made available. So I would say it's very common. Jennifer, you're free to, Amy, you're free, you know, too, what's happening across the nation. I think it's, it's pretty common and growing.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's widespread and it really just depends on the community and what kind of things are asked for or in demand in that particular community.
And space.
Right. And, and there too, that's the library's job to anticipate. It isn't just waiting for the comments or the requests or suggestions. It's the library's job to anticipate. And that goes hand in hand with when you get a suggestion, saying, it, it should almost be a yes unless it's, you know, and give it a try and, and not have no be the, you know, be the reaction. And there, I'm not talking about community library network. I'm just saying that's, that's sort of what all libraries need to kind of, the point they need to get to. Any other questions?
I have one here on second goal, make empower patrons to come to access, use library services. What happens to the social experience that I hear people say that they like to have when they come to the library with the staff?
Yeah. So in, in particular, I think you're talking about too, about the supported cell service. You should be able to come in and leave without talking to staff if that's what you want. And, and so that's a great question. And it is, if that's what they want, then you have to figure out what is the best social interaction then? Is it over checking a book in and out when there's a line behind them? Or is it doing self-check but having other ways to say, I, I'm here for you to ask a question. Is it about authors? Is it about, you know, it could even be listening. I mean, if what you said, if, if a library says, yeah, but they want to tell me about their grandchild or they just lost their husband or they, you know, and they just want that connection. I say, great, then you should be really trying to, that, that should be one of your, in your implementation plan, that should be some, maybe a specific program that isn't a sign saying, if you've lost your husband, read, at least recently come and talk to him. But is, but is just, it's more on the back, goal five of staff training and knowing how to one-spot that. And we're doing a lot more training, libraries are doing a lot more training on those kinds of, whether it's social services, whether it's dementia and memory. People can get very agitated and they think, oh, that, that patron is, you know, such a, you know, such a bother and they're so ornery. And what they're really doing is experiencing a little bit of sort of where am I right now moment. And so as we get more and more of that training to be able to, then we can have more meaningful interactions, whether it's through traditional readers advisory or other kinds of programs and services. If you've heard of, I mean, we were talking about the library of things, there's a library of people. If you've heard of the human library that some libraries have tried is saying, you can check out a person. That could be, it could be because it's their career. It could be because of something, you know, about them that you just want to know. You know, you're a fundamentalist Christian, I want to understand that. You're an atheist, I want to understand that. And, and those kinds of things, it's really across the spectrum. And those have done really good things in terms of both that community building. But, so that's, that's what I would say to that is, it's actually asking staff to be more attentive than it is just saying, oh, I guess we can go sit in the back and read a book now. It's, and it's saying also get our heads up off the computer. It's saying, get our hands off of the materials. Those will get back on the shelf. What's more important is that person walking through the door, that person over there.
Well said, because I think, and I remember that in our library reports, we had a story about a family, a person who was well-served by one of our branches where a family member was confused and agitated and the library was replaced. Anybody else remember that a bit?
Where they said, I came here because I felt safe, right? It was safe.
Well, I thought the family member talked us about, the other family member was, was not the regular patron, but had a good experience at the library because it was a social experience that was safe and kind. And so anyway, that reminded me of that. Then the other thing I'll do, then I'll finish up on that social experience was, was we have a lot of rural communities and on those dark winter days, I think there are times where the social experience is, is vital to sanity when you live in. I think there are times where the social experience is vital to sanity when you live in.
Right. Yeah. And, and when you, or one of you asked about the, you know, how common are the library of things and some of these things? What's getting common now, especially in the social service areas, a social worker, the need for a social worker in the library. Now, in the large urban libraries, I, now this is my opinion. In the larger urban libraries, I would say, okay, I can, I can see that. But in smaller libraries and smaller communities and mid-sized, where I really start to push back on that, is that a comfort level on, because we're uncomfortable as staff members? Then we need to get over that and we need to get the training and we need to start making those human connections and the relationships. If we need a social worker in the library is just a way to say, I want to continue to not deal with any of these things, then that, that's an issue, to me, that's an issue for the library. And that's that through training and really saying, we got to remove these barriers, even the physical barriers of counters, of desks, to say, how do we get physically closer to people and not be afraid of one another?
Did you hear anything, Nick, from, in your survey, the folks talking about transportation and public transportation, access to libraries? I don't see it defined here as such.
Yeah, you know, we heard a little bit about that, but it wasn't, I mean, some, there too, like the unhoused, which we heard a lot about there. Transportation, and again, Jennifer, Elaine, Amy, chime in, but transportation wasn't, didn't feel like the, the major issue there. So people have ways to get around. And so that wasn't, to me and what I was hearing and seeing, that was not a major issue. But Jennifer or Elaine or Amy, because this is still, anyways, go ahead.
I didn't hear transportation particularly, but certainly heard about how does the library network deploy the, the vehicles they have to go out into the community to kind of reach people where they are. But I wasn't necessarily hearing that as a transportation issue so much as kind of rural areas and just being able to strategically use the resources the network has to do that outreach into the community. So.
Yeah, excellent point. And having the vehicles is also, people, I think people know that. And so they know that that is able to, to get out there. All right, Goal Four. Increase awareness and engagement with Community Library Network programs and services. And like I said earlier, this really is about marketing visibility. How do you create ambassadors to go out and say, this is what the library is doing? Aren't they awesome? Did you know this was there? All that kind of stuff. So the first one, increase brand recognition and develop a marketing strategy. Seems pretty straightforward. Expand communication throughout the service area through increased use of multiple channels. So there are two, social media presence, the website, the calendar app. And sort of there on the calendar is, as you start to make those partnerships, you might find that, how do we start to integrate some of the different like programming that's happening with the library and other, and other partners or with other partners? And how do you start to tie all this together again into kind of that ecosystem? Develop an outreach strategy to connect with key organizations and share information about Community Library Network. And so there, you know, give talks around town, the kind of thing that Amy does and will continue to do. The Alice Task Force, a community calendar. It's one thing to have your calendar up to date and then you find out they don't or someone else does. Is there a need, you know, finding out kind of what that, what that need is? It's a lot of work. But you can, you can look at that. And sometimes the library will say, we're the logical choice for that, of housing that. And then what's for older kids? And that's that high school and middle school age group trying to get out that, get out more of a connection to them. And then amplify support for core library values of literacy, intellectual freedom and open access. And so some ways to do that is partner with other organizations whose missions align. In, in here, I'll give you some, some quotes, because they're literally quotes. Some terms that I thought pulled from, in particular, it was the community survey, but also from one or two, one-to-one with some of the community leaders. And sort of when they think about the library and what it can do and be, network-centered mindset. And so not just for the library, but the whole community, getting into that network-centered mindset. Another phrase was, the library is a community connector. The library is a neutral convener. The library has inclusive neutrality. And then just kind of as a catch, a lot of all of the kind of, and this is happening nationally, but a lot of the censorship and intellectual freedom, conversations, debates and those kinds of things, all very needed, all very, you know, you, you have to respect all positions on this. But what we think is important in Goal Four is saying, okay, these are all the positions. These are all the opinions and that. This is what the, this is what this library though stands for in this community. And some of the terms that I had read there that, that some of the folks in your community used, I thought, yeah, that's really, that's really getting at that. And you do have both locally through the missions of others, through some of your own words that we've heard along the way. And then also in the library profession, we have a library bill of rights. We have a code of ethics. And just even working from those and the boards approving and adopting those every year is a way to, is a way for you to set the framework for what you're trying to do within it. Are you always going to be perfect? Is every item on the shelf going to be the best item and all that? No, human beings, authors, publishers, all that stuff goes into the mix. But as long as you have that framework in saying, this is what the library stands for and, and you know, these are our profession, our principles as a profession, those working in it. And then also what the community wants and demands also. So that's, that's what that area, Goal Four, is really getting at there. Any questions on Goal Four? Okay. Goal Five, and as I said, this is the infrastructure and capacity is, now we're kind of behind the scenes. The first four goals are saying, okay, you guys gather around. This is all the stuff we're going to do for the next three years. Go. And, and staff, of course, you want to hear from them and say, are you, are you ready to go? And these are some of the things that, you know, they have responded with saying, yes, we're ready to go. But we want to make sure that, you know, you're investing in the library staff by completing and implementing an updated staff compensation plan. And this really is something everywhere now. We used to be able, you could pay someone, you know, a high school kid seven and a quarter, which was the minimum wage three years ago. And now they're getting 16 bucks at the fast food restaurant, literally. And so, you know, they're smart, they can make economic choices. And so it's just, it's getting much harder. Everything's, there's more opportunity to make more money. So taking a look, completing and implementing it, the compensation. Robust onboarding and training plans for both staff and for you, for the board. And that's really important. It's also the thing that we, in libraries, because we want to do things that sometimes we forget and let slide a little bit, is, that's right, we got to make sure that when someone comes in, we're not just throwing them out on the floor, that they are getting acculturated to, you know, what our values are, but also just the very specific training kinds of things. And that goes for the, for the board as well. What is that framework that you are now going to be supporting as a board member? And make, and that happens through the onboarding process. And, and ongoing continuing education. There's many, it doesn't have to be in your state, doesn't have to be locally. There's lots of training that you can engage in and how to be a really high-functioning board. And I'm not saying that's an issue with you, but for the onboarding and having that kind of process in place. Because it's really easy for things, whether it's on the staff end or the, a board end, to just kind of go, you know, fall apart because there wasn't enough attention to kind of, on that, on an ongoing basis. Create narratives and responses that affirm Community Library Network and American Public Library values. So staff and board members can be effective ambassadors for Community Library Network and its vital role in the community. So that, that hearkens back to that goal, the last bullet in Goal Four. And really saying, okay, right now we're in a time where, and we've had these periods of time before, where there's challenges to what the library is, what it stands for, what it can do for the community, what it should do for the community. And if staff are not prepared, it's all part, it's all part of training. If they're not ready and prepared, then you are putting them either in an embarrassing situation, humiliating or whatever it might be, or they say things that can actually harm the organized, you know, who knows? And so it's part of that training to say, this is what, this is the, you know, the proper response based on the library value and what the board stands for and all that kind of stuff. So I think that's, should, should make pretty good sense on that. And that's both for the board members. What are you going out and saying when people say this or that? It doesn't matter which end or where from on the spectrum. What is it that the library stands for? And then lastly, develop facilities master plan to identify and prioritize capital projects for short-term needs and then long-term growth. Short-term needs, you know, could be some of those outdoor spaces, indoor spaces. Long-term growth might be, should there be another branch over here? Or do we need a new, does that branch that already exists need a new building? Or does it need to be moved, you know, half a mile over? That, those kinds of questions as far as the long term. So, any, any questions on Goal Five?
Thank you. One of the things that I asked when we went over this in the study was, I was, I'm going to be blunt again. Is this just boilerplate or did you really, I mean, you took a look at our, you know, we, so, so the things that you did were the staff survey, the, the community survey, one-on-one, and then our retreat. And I certainly, as a board member, had very little input. I mean, I didn't, I don't know that I had any, you know, I mean, I came to those, I did those things, some of those things.
Did you fill out the survey?
I did fill out the survey. And, but I just, I guess I, when you, when I asked this question of you before, is this just boilerplate stuff or how did you, is this tailored to our community? And is, are these really the things you heard? You were very reassuring. I guess I would just like you to share some of that again with this whole board.
Yeah, and then there are two, again, Jennifer and Elaine can weigh in. All of this, there isn't any, the community survey on itself, you would not want to build a strategic plan around only the community survey. Nor would you want to build a plan around only the staff survey and et cetera, et cetera, or the one-to-one. So it's all of that gathered together. It's also visiting with the staff. It's getting the tour around the area. And I'm driving with Amy and getting the background and, and a lot of different information. And as we're asking questions and that, that's, that is extremely important. And then that all starts to fit together and like I said, with our experience as well. So it's not boilerplate at all. But as I said earlier, they are public libraries. And there's commonality across public libraries, whether it's in Idaho or the nation. And so you're going to see some of the same issues. People looking at their library in kind of the same way, also in asking questions that. So, so there's an expectation of what the library is there for and provides. But this is, no, it is very specific. And that's why when I was reading sort of the examples, that's not the implementation plan. And that's really where, where you will see, when Amy sits down with her team and takes each one of these bullets and starts saying, you know what? I think we're going to do this, 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 these three things just for that one bullet. And when you see that completed document, I, I believe you're going to go, yes, okay. This, I see how this all fits into very, very local. But the strategic plan by design is high-level because you don't want the board, any board, sort of like on the dance floor. You want them up in the balcony going, making sure that the dance is happening and everything is, yep, yep, yep. The music's playing, that's good, we like it. You're all doing your job, but it's really the staff that needs to do the very specifics. So I, I, I hope that's helpful or?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other, yeah. What happens next? That was what Judy asked. So what, the next part is that we go over this and we decide whether this, this strategic plan works for us. Is that correct? No, yeah, that's, it's, it's our turn now. The other thing that we talked about at the steering committee meeting when we looked over it is, this is, this is the board's plan for the staff. Anything more than this is staff responsibility. So this is where we, we are. This is our policy level. This is what we get to do this day to staff. This is what we want you to do. How it gets implemented in the community is what we've hired this, the staff to do. That's, that's always a hard one, I think, for board members. Elaine can leave us.
Very well said.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to say or comment about? Right now, I guess we're kind of a silent group today.
That can be good or bad, I don't know.
Exactly. Regina, you have anything you want to say about being on the steering committee?
I mean, that's part of the reason why I haven't commented, because I, I got to hear the review before and ask my questions then. But I would just reiterate that I, I felt like it exemplifies a lot of what I think we heard in the community forum and surveys and all of that. So I, I think it's great.
Okay, that sounds good. Amy?
No, I just want to thank Library Strategies. You know, this has been great and I know you'll be working with, with us on the implementation plan. But yeah, I think when we saw the draft, it was really nice to see a very cohesive, bringing it together. Some of them were surprises, right? I mean, some of these things are goals that we set both for the director and then things that I've been working with staff on. So it was nice to see that even without necessarily me saying that or any of us saying that, that that, that rose up as needs. And so certainly I think it's great to see it kind of all together. And now, now we'll be focusing on, okay, what, what are actually the specific things to, to make all of this happen? But I think it's a really great break now.
Sounds good. All right. But so we will, will we be talking with you guys again or maybe on request only?
I think if, if there's something, I'm sorry, I had to join on my phone because for some reason my work computer dropped, dropped the call. If there is any follow-up that you need from us, we're certainly happy to talk to you again. I think Nick has been stressing that the implementation plan is for the library. So that is not something a board approves. That is the work plan of the day-to-day work of the library. So that, I think that, that sometimes depending on what Amy and you need, sometimes boards do see those, but it isn't a matter of approval. And so, you know, so we wouldn't be presenting, we wouldn't be presenting that to you again, but more than happy to, to speak with anyone who has any further questions about the process or, or the plan. It is part of what we'll be doing next, after the plan is approved. It'll be formatted by our graphic designer. So you'll have a really nice piece that you'll be able to use for some of Goal Number Four. And that outreach into the community is sharing this plan with the community. So we do, and the library, of course, will rely on you as board members to be able to share the plan out in the community. So, so your job is not done yet with this plan. And so we just say thank you in advance for that. And I'd like to say especially thank you to those of you who did serve on that steering committee. That's tremendously important for us. coming in to have the local steering committee. And it was such an engaged group. So really, as I said at the beginning, it was a pleasure. And, and again, so I say that, I mean, happy to answer any additional questions, happy to have you call us back as needed.
And that's what I was thinking is that, you know, board members may have questions on the process, on how it, on how it, and that may, we may need to talk to you guys again about that.
Absolutely.
Good. Oh, and dashboards too. I had talked about those little, you had said that. And, and that is a way for the board to be able to measure how we're doing.
Yeah.
And I know we'll, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Yes, you will see that. So what we do is once we have the graphic design format for the strategic plan, we have a one-page dashboard that lays out all of those five goals and each strategy. And then typically there is a kind of a red, yellow, green column for each of those. So that that's something that, that Amy can review with you all at each meeting or quarterly, however you determine is best. And you can see markers on that. So where has this goal moved? It's not a bad thing if something is staying in the red, because maybe that's not something that's gonna happen until year three. It is a three-year strategic plan. So, but the dashboard is a really simple way for, for staff to review with the board on where progress in the plan has happened.
Sounds great. Well, thank you very much, all of you. And it's been a pleasure.
Likewise.
Are we waving, are we saying goodbye?
Happy to stay on if you need us. Otherwise, yeah, I think.
Are we, are we okay? I think probably we have to, we have another half of this meeting we've got to do for budgeting. So I think we're looking at that. But thank you very much. And it has been a pleasure for us. Stay healthy. Yeah, stay healthy.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Booth?
Booth, they're gone.
Okay. We have time to talk about this strategic plan a little bit. If you want to, we can take a break. We will, at 3:30, we're going to start talking about the budget. And at least I know Bob will be here. And I don't know if he's, if Julie will be here as well, but Michelle's here. So our financial committee will be here. So I don't know if you would like to share things now?
Would you entertain a motion?
I'd like to, okay, what's?
I don't know. I'm just was thinking, because that would spur more discussion if I moved that we adopted the strategic plan as proposed.
Okay.
Said, would you entertain it? I, I didn't actually make it.
I don't think that I can, you may make a motion whenever you want. We did put action item next to it, just in case that that was the, the deal, if that was, or, but this is discussion time for those who might want to discuss it.
Well, and I've definitely sat with it longer, probably than, than several other board members. So just to be hearing Nick review it today, just kind of cemented for me that, that, I mean, I, I think these are great goals for our district. So I'm prepared to, to adopt it. But anyway, but we can discuss.
So would we discuss it kind of goal by goal? If you can do whatever you'd like?
Did you make a motion, Regina? Well, I know it's a little ambiguous, isn't it?
It's very ambiguous.
Because, because I, I'm putting that, I'm putting that out there. But then, I mean, if people feel like they're not prepared, then I, I can, I can withdraw it.
Be ambiguous motion.
So I, I guess, yes, there's a motion out there.
Okay, then it's been moved to, it's been moved to adopt the strategic plan presented by Library Strategies, 2023, 2025 Strategic Plan presented by.
July 18th version.
Okay, July 18th version. Discussion.
Yeah, I, for one, have not had time to digest it all, but it does kind of seem like a big generic push for the ALA agenda. Yeah, without protections for children. I don't know, it just seems to be more the, the last strategic plan that talked about public trust and, oh, I don't remember if it specifically mentioned the CLN reputation, but just the things that they mentioned that would go along with this seem to be things that would further tarnish our trust and reputation with the community.
I don't know what you mean by ALA agenda. And, and I, and right, and I, but, okay, so I, I'm sorry, I just was looking at my notes. I apologize. Anybody else?
Can you help me? Where are here?
Are you concerned?
There were a lot of things that he mentioned that weren't on here, that he was encouraging us to implement to support the strategic plan.
In Goal One, or there's something that, that works?
I'll have to look through it.
Goal Two?
Actually, Amy, you might know this. It has to do with what she said. He did, you know, each bullet point, he had a whole list of things under each one. Is that something we have access to? Because there was a lot of information that, you know, you'd have to go off of instead of just the bullet point.
Right. So they did give me their notes, but what they were clear about is some of those were suggestions. This is where we would come up, right? So when it says, let's say, for example, collaborate with workforce providers to offer services and resources, you know, he threw out things like job fair, basic life skills. Well, I think then we would need to determine, is that would make sense? Is that what helps me that goal? Or there are other services and resources that would be more appropriate for the library? So they really were, he was using examples. Now, some of those examples were from the survey and things that they heard. So they weren't just their own. I, I think Nick may have mentioned that at one point. It wasn't necessarily like Nick's suggestions, you know, but it was some things that they had heard. So they were kind of sharing some of those things. But really, what you have in front of you, the goals and strategies are what the board would be approving or modifying if they felt like there was something, you know, some wording that needed to be changed or a strategy that should be modified or taken off or, or one added. So really, it's what you have in front of us. So what he said was just giving some context, like some suggestions, because they are, you know, it's supposed to be high level. So they're supposed to be general, but he was giving a few examples of how this might, or how we might make those strategies.
Did you think that what he was saying, that he was saying, do that stuff?
No, no, not at all. I thought that depending on which bullet point, several of his suggestions were good suggestions. So I, you know, at least I would have liked to be able to see them or know that you guys have them.
Yeah, so I do have the notes. And if that was, that would be helpful for the board. But really, he wanted us to not be so focused on those suggestions because that could water down. Like, one of the things he didn't say here, but said in the steering committee for one of the examples was redesign the website. And we kind of freaked out a little bit, I think, because we just redesigned the website a year ago. But there was actual feedback, though, in the community survey particularly, about some people found hard, some things hard to find on the, well, it's been a year since we redesigned the website. It's probably a good time to do an usability study. So it isn't necessarily redesigning the website, but it's a study to say, where are the pain points on the website? And so, so as I sit down and do the implementation plan, it's probably not going to be redesign the website. But it might be, take a look and do an audit of our website to find out what could be done to make it better. Does that make sense? So again, I think they don't want us to get hung up on their notes and suggestions because it really was just few examples.
Trying to give us pictures.
And I think part of the reason that I've gone ahead and made the motion is because, I mean, I kind of, I know what comes next. I know what comes next, which is when we get their list of action items and how they intend to implement it. And so we, that will, we'll get to see that, right? This is kind of the, the high-level overview. We wouldn't vote on the next part. But, but that's when you figure out the action items. And I guess I assume you're half, I mean, I don't, we haven't, you haven't said anything about being unhappy with the, the draft strategic plan that we got from the consultants. So I would just assume that staff is probably eager to start identifying their action items, and I would like to see those. So anyway.
Okay, maybe it'd be helpful if it was explained exactly how this works in, you know, because I don't, I don't know. Like, if, if we did approve this, then what's the next step?
Right. So after the board approves it, then, and this was an option that we are taking Library Strategies up off, up on. So, so the next step would be, regardless of whether we use Library Strategies or not, is then now, so if the board approves it, whether it's with changes or without, then we now take this and say, okay, here's kind of our roadmap for the next three years. What, what do we kind of focus on in year one? What are some of the individual action items that will get us to some of these strategies? What could be a focus for year two, year three? What, what are we already doing? So it's kind of like, hey, keep doing that, because everybody said that's, that's important and we should keep going. But now it's kind of to take some of these general broad statements and to identify what are some specific objectives. So I guess I would say they're using here the goals or kind of the broad, the broad areas of focus. And then we're now saying, okay, here's how we're actually gonna get us there. So it, let's say for Goal Four, increase awareness. Okay, so one action item might be develop a marketing plan, you know, for, for the next year, you know, and maybe have a marketing plan for each year, you know, that has some specific ways to increase awareness. Maybe some of the other things for, like, build Community Library Network infrastructure. It talks about onboarding. Well, that's something that Lindsay and I, and Janelle and I have talked about kind of already, that we really do need a more cohesive onboarding plan for our staff. And so we would then start saying, well, what does it look like to create an onboarding plan? You know, what are some of the goals? So really now it's kind of really starting to delve into each of these areas and thing, seeing what makes, what makes sense, what can we do? And then, okay, so like for one example, Goal Five, the very last bullet point, the facilities master plan, kind of the board, and I have already kind of said that next year, you know, is when we would undertake that. So we can already kind of be like, well, we can now assign almost like a timeframe to that. And we've met that. But once we've done the master plan, then this strategy will actually probably lead to other things because we'll now have a facilities master plan, but what does it mean? Okay, it said that we needed to, we need more meeting spaces, or eventually we need another library in such and such area. So then it starts to translate to more information and more goals. So I think what comes next is then what they're calling the implementation plan. And so they have offered to do some of that brainstorming with staff. And all they do is similar to what they did here is facilitate it. They're not telling us what to do. They're just saying we can help, again, make it into a nice manageable, you know, document that will be easy for staff to track.
So to help, to help Vanessa, I pulled up our current strategic plan, just so I could kind of compare. And so the, the, the way this is organized is slightly different than the way we organized the one before. But before we had what we called focus areas. Here it's called goals. And on the last strategic plan underneath our focus areas, we had initiatives. These, you know, we don't have initiatives, they're just bullet points. And then if you look at our current strategic plan, after the focus areas and the initiatives for each section, then there's something called actions. That's what I'm talking about, which is we get to set kind of those two, you know, introductory platforms, I guess. But then the staff, when you go on and pull our current strategic plan, the staff has created those actions. And so that's, I think, kind of getting to where Michelle's at too. I mean, possibly wanting to see, well, what does that translate to by way of actions? But.
So the actions come back to us?
Not, well, it's how they're going to implement them, but, but we, but they're based off of what we are telling them. Hey, these are our, these are our goals and objectives. How are you gonna accomplish it? So I think if you have a, an issue with one of the goals and objectives, then, then that's what we're talking about. I mean, we can, we can communicate with, with the admin team, right? Because this is supposed to be a collaborative process and say, well, I really don't like that action item or book. But, but still, we're reliant on staff to come up with how they are gonna figure out how we get from A to B. That helped.
It, it really does, except I'm still, and I don't know if you're using the word action item, because I'm, I'm thinking action item on our agenda. Or, or, so it's not. So when they come up with this, it doesn't come, like, if we approve this today, and then they come up with some action item, we don't approve that, because we've just approved the whole thing. All right. Okay, now I'm clear. Thank you.
And then I would say caveat would be in there, you know, if, if one of these action items that we come up with reaches the level of like a budget or a contract or something like that, then certainly, so if we said, like, I'm not saying this would help, you know, deploy a variety of vehicles, and we're like, well, we need one more, then we would come back to, then certainly, then we would engage the board in that conversation.
Okay, thank you so much.
But, yeah, those.
Yes.
I found I needed to write at the end of all these, I found ideas. I just wrote, the section says staff implement, staff implement timeline, budget, and who's in charge. Those are kind of the things that you all now have to do, the summary of what this sets us up, sets you up to do. These are the things you're gonna have to do. Because I don't, you know, this is a long list of a lot of stuff to get done in the next two years. I've read it.
Great.
And, and that's okay, because as we go along, I think you would come back to us and say, it's gonna take longer than two years on this. Or we got this already done, we're so close. Those are the things I think that we as a board get to hear from the staff on, how you doing? Or we come back to you and say, now that we've been out in the community with these ideas and listening, we probably should adjust whatever it is, or delay, or hurry up, because community's growing so fast. How about census data we never had before? It's gonna be the numbers we have to work with for the next 10 years. And so far at least, census data, what we have and what's happening, and saying there's gonna be lots more growth. So some of these things may bubble up, needing more, more attention than, than at this moment, I can see happening. So for me, I like, I put stars by all these things, I circle things like, yep, yep, yep. And I'm ready to adopt these goals. And the little asterisks underneath them, that's action items. Then here back from the staff on, wow, with all this, here's what we should start with, the timeline, what it's gonna cost us, because that's gonna be really a factor to me in what questioning happens. And then I don't care who's in charge, you can figure that part out. But it is important to me that there be designated people to do it. Otherwise, it drifts. It floats along and falls off, or falls survivalist. If it doesn't, I have a responsibility to say, bring that back up on the list, please, because I think it's important. And if the board does, then we direct Amy to do it. If it's just my little trisky spot, then I need to back off.
Any else? We do have this motion. Michelle?
Well, I just, I think there needs to be protections, like our last one talked about, maintain and cultivate public trust.
You go five.
But no, this is on our, our current one, our current strategic plan. And it talks about implementing consistent, member-friendly policies. I, I think that a lot of our policies are not friendly to children at all. They're mentally destructive, actually. And I'd just say, maybe I missed it because I haven't had time to look it over a lot, but it just doesn't seem like there's anything in here that talks about public trust, you know, the taxpayers that pay for the whole thing. So I think that there should be protections for them. And I second the feeling. Okay, so like under Goal One, the last bullet point, utilize community experts and build connection through network-wide programming. He talked about identifying misinformation. I don't think that's the proper role of government to be the Ministry of Truth. I don't think that's why people pay taxes for the library. And I believe somewhere in the ALA, it says something about our, our function is not to determine what people should think, but to trust them to make up their own minds. I, I just think that that Ministry of Truth thing is just a horrible, horrible idea.
Tell me the Ministry of Truth, what that is or where it is?
From the book 1984, where the ministry of, because he talked about having.
Be Nick?
Yes, the guy in the presentation, about having the library identifying misinformation. And that's essentially the Ministry of Truth. So we're the government. So we're the government and we're working with these experts and we're going to tell you what the truth is. And.
Think he might have been saying something else.
I don't know. Well, like before, when you said that we wouldn't interrupt public comments except for to correct information and you said it would be like, not principles or ideas. Well, you didn't say that, but you said it would be like if they had the hours wrong. You know, and that would be fine, we don't need experts for that. It just, it seems like there's a big push in this whole thing to collaborate with experts in the community and partner with organizations. And it just seems like the organizations that we've been partnering with already are bent on destroying children. And so it just feels to me like this whole thing is just a big push towards more of that.
I don't want to be on the board that partners with people that do that kind of stuff.
Okay, well, the Supreme Court has already determined that profanity and, well, you, well, anyway. The profanity and pornography and stuff like that, that even leading exposure to children is psychologically and permanently damaging. And the books that have been read during the public, public comment time over the last couple of months are absolutely horrific. I mean, as an adult, I don't even want to listen to that kind of stuff. And I can't even imagine anyone being willing to subject a child to that. But yet that stuff comes from the library.
Only if some parent allows it to be checked out, right?
No, kid can pick it up off the shelf and it seems like there's, the books that are being promoted, the ones that are out on display to catch children's attention are disproportionately these books that are harmful to kids. So these are books that would be, that anyone else in the state of Idaho would be arrested for giving to a child. But yet somehow there's a thought process that it's not going to damage them if they get it from a library. I mean, it's the same material and it's smut and it's damaging. And it just, it's disturbing.
Could we kind of focus back down on the strategic plan and the bullet points? I was incredibly impressed when I looked at it. And a couple of the things that I think it focused on, I think they picked up that we begun to, that we're starting to do. One of my frustrations when I started on the post falls board was the fact that we were very insular. We did not, at that time I was in the school district. We really accept bringing kindergarteners to the library for an intro. We really didn't coordinate and touch the idea of partnerships. The outreach, I was impressed with use, with the focus on the outreach vehicles. I like the idea that this stresses communication with partners and everyone in the community because we have lost that sense of community. I think partnerships and outreach and communication are the focal points of this. And I think that's, depending on where staff decides to take that, I think those are important goals. And I think that's what we need to be doing. I like the idea that he quoted specific words that were used by people involved in the plan, community members. I was, I'm really impressed with it. I think it's really good.
Did Rochelle make a motion to add that wordage from the old one into the new one? And then. Oh, amend it? I'm, I don't know. Also, I, I did, you know, I definitely heard when he said the misinformation thing and I was super confused. But that was from him. And, and like the question I asked about that list of his stuff, it's not, that's not your guys' ideas. I really didn't know what he was talking about, honestly.
When I think in that specific example, how do I, I think he was saying, you know, so some libraries have done workshops on how to identify misinformation. They're not telling you what information, but they're like, there are information literacy courses that are taught in colleges, taught in elementary school libraries and so forth, about how to evaluate sources. So it's really about how to evaluate information, not necessarily saying this information is true, this information is wrong. But if you're looking at a website, you know, you can look at the publication date of the website to see was it 20 years ago? You know, you can look at, you know, is it, is it a dot org, dot com, whatever? Because it might tell you, is it a private business or? So that, that's more there. And I think what I, just to clarify there on experts and community partners, what they're saying utilize community experts, it's for like, if we were going to do, let's say, a class on gardening, let's bring in an expert on gardening, not just have, you know, Amy or somebody teach an expert, you know, teach a class on gardening, right? Let's bring those people that are already experts or are there groups that already have that expertise? And here it actually talked about collaborating with specific partners. So in all of this, early learning providers, workforce providers, social service providers, I think this is where we can then say who makes sense to partnership. And, you know, right now we have a number of organizations that we partnership, but it can always be expanded because when we do partner with other organizations, that's when we're stretching the taxpayer resources and then we're not necessarily just using our own funds. So if we're partnering, let's, let's say, Farragut State Park, you know, which we do regularly, you know, then we're able to utilize their expertise and their resources and then it's saving us, you know, in, in time and resources. So I think this is where we really can look at, but be strategic and how we're partnering and who we're partnering with.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to.
You have a motion on the floor already.
Amen.
Okay, so I would like to amend the current motion by adding at the end. No, Judy, no. Hang on a second. By adding a goal six, cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures. Goal six, cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures.
Okay, it's been moved to amend the motion on the floor by adding a goal six, which would be cultivate public trust. Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I had, I just had cultivate public trust.
Cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures.
Okay.
Policies and procedures.
So is, and we're, and we'll halt the original motion and look at the amendment. So it's been moved to amend the original motion by adding goal six, cultivate public trust by implementing member friendly policies and procedures, consistent member friendly. By implementing consistent. Okay. All right, discussion. I have something I'd like to say. Why wouldn't that, would, why wouldn't that fit under the marketing under goal four as a bullet point? Rather than a whole minutes that fits, increase brand recognition, expand communication, develop an outreach strategy, amplify support, and cultivate public trust. It's a, it's a, it. Cultivating public trust feels to be very much within the, the, this, this goal.
That's goal four, maybe?
Right.
Okay, so make it bullet point five under goal four?
Yeah.
Okay, I agree. Yeah, it fits in there.
Okay, so if, let's, let's continue this discussion because if she, so Rochelle said, yes, it fits there. That would be a fifth bullet point there. If everybody thinks that's okay to put there, then she can withdraw the amendment and make another one.
I suppose we have a motion with amendment, pass it that way.
No, we would, she'd withdraw this one and then she could make another amendment to put it under goal four, bullet point five. Session on, I, I'm just, this is still within the discussion of the original amendment.
Right, first of all, we love, recognize this. So we did.
And this is because the amendment was to, to establish a goal six, which would be cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policy and procedure. My suggestion is, is that we put it within the marketing plan, you know, within the marketing ones.
Just need to think through the wording wherever it goes. I understand where it goes then.
Yeah, so, and I believe Rochelle said that's fine. So does she need to restate the amendment?
I, I'm waiting to hear if the rest of you find that mine.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Could I hear the language one more time?
Cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures.
Me, the words family.
Member friendly.
Policies and procedures, and policies and procedures part. That's a long strategic plan. Just thinking out loud.
Amy, do you have anything you'd like to say about that?
What are we missing here?
Well, I, I think it does make sense to have it under goal four because it is more of a strategy versus a broad, I mean, broad goal, because if we did add a goal six, then we probably need to then brainstorm a few more strategies to go under it.
Yeah.
So, so I think it does make sense as a strategy. And I think it, it, it goes well with awareness and engagement because it's really about that broad, the reputation, the trust of the library. So, so I think that makes a lot of sense. And it is getting a little more specific than some of the other items, but it's still talking about policies and procedures, which at least maybe I might, I mean, policies is still the board level. But then procedures, I mean, all of these are going to come down to how to staff, how are staff going to meet these? You know, or what are those specific? I know we're calling it different things, action items or objectives, you know, to meet those. So I think, I think it does go along with goal four. And I think it makes sense there. And I don't think it's, I mean, some of where the public concern came from, you know, was, you know, amplifying support. But I think this also kind of takes it another step. And I think we've already talked about it in some of our previous board meetings. I think cultivating public trust is just some, someplace we need, we've been engaged in, but we need to do even more. And, and it goes along with some of those other strategies.
Is it a barrier to anything that you see coming up that the rest of the program suggests you do with the other goals?
No, it talks about member friendly and I think that's, we always want to be customer service and focused on the community. So I don't.
And if you're wondering about the wording, Judy, I looked at it pretty much, well, word to word out of the current strategic plan.
Okay, so do you want to, it doesn't sound like there's objections to this. And so we have a way forward. Do you want to withdraw that amendment and make another one?
Yes, I withdraw the amendment and I would like to make the amendment that we add under goal four as bullet point five, cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures.
Okay, it's been moved to add a fifth bullet point to goal four, which would be cultivate public trust by implementing consistent member friendly policies and procedures. All those in favor?
I am.
Post. All right, now let's go back to the whole motion, which is to adopt this strategic plan with the amendment. So I guess, do we need, I think we need a motion to adopt, or do we, I guess we just could go back, go back now that we have the amendment. Do you, now we have the amendment in place. Do you want to go back to the original one, which is to adopt this strategic plan?
I don't know, because I don't get Robert's rules of orders really. So, I mean, so I made the motion.
You accepted amendment.
Rochelle made an amendment to the motion.
We've all accepted.
Which we all accepted, so.
The motion is the, it's still, that's still the motion and it now has an amendment.
Oh, okay. So now we vote on the motion as amended?
Yeah. For further discussion.
I think I understand it.
And then I would just say, we're about 15 minutes over on the topic.
I know.
I know. I'm not here.
Okay. But, so, all right. So let's put it this way, would you like to make a motion to accept this strategic plan with the amendment?
Didn't we just amend it?
Yeah. I think you can now just vote on the motion.
Yeah, that's what I think.
That's what I think. Okay. Now we're voting on the motion as amended by Rochelle's motion.
All right, is there any more discussion on that motion?
Yes, I would like to amend it by deleting, yeah, taking out under goal one, the last bullet points, utilize community experts and build connection through network wide programming.
Okay. Well, I mean, this is, okay, so this is the, the amendment. So you're now asking to amend this again by removing goal, bullet point one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, which is utilizing community experts. You'd like to remove that, is that right? Yes. Okay, so, so the amendment is to remove goal, did I say seven? Remove bullet point seven from goal one.
I guess I, I just want to clarify, I mean, we already do this and we want, I mean, we use community experts all the time because we're not experts in everything. And I think it's important to use community experts. If, you know, if we're bringing in someone to talk about water conservation, it should not be, again, you know, Lindsay, leading water conservation, it should be somebody that's expert. So I don't know, I mean, this is already something that we do when we plan programs is we use community experts. So I think that just kind of makes sense.
And I'd like to say that last month I went to Beekeeping 101. She was definite, she was definitely a community expert and I was super impressed. And so I guess I wonder Rochelle, what you think would happen? You know, what, what's, what's the reason you want to get rid of, of this? Because I actually, like I said, it was an amazing program. Definitely an expert from the, from the region. And all I could think is that I want to come to more of, you know, of the programs, of the community experts. So if you could, you know, say your concerns about that.
Well, I guess the network, network wide programming part of it, I, I kind of was thinking that the individual libraries might lose their local flavor. But yeah, I mean, there's like a lot of things like the, the reptile man. I mean, that, that's obviously very popular among all of them. I, I guess my concern was just his pushing of the, you know, in my mind, the ministry of truth thing. But I get that's too narrow of a focus, so I withdraw the motion.
Okay, so that has been withdrawn. So we're now back to our original motion, which is accepting this strategic plan with the amendment.
I think we need more time to digest this. I mean, this was just presented. There, there's a lot there. It's three pages long. Our last strategic plan was one page long. It was more simple and easy to understand, I guess.
Okay, and it, what else? We do have, I mean, we were obviously very far over. We do have a very important budget thing to do. We have a member who would like a little more time.
Is it possible for our, to revisit this at the next Tuesday's meeting? Or is that the wrong type of meeting?
We would. No, I don't think we'd revisit it. Then we certainly want, I would think it would come to us at our next board meeting.
Rather than withdraw my motion, can I simply table it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can we table this motion until our next regular meeting?
I mean, yeah, I, I, that's why I was kind of saying, being my motion, I'm, I'm willing to table the motion.
Okay, that sounds good. Is there any reason that impact anything that you're doing if by delaying the decision?
No, I mean, I kind of knew we might need a month. I mean, we put action item in case, you know, we're ready to, to go. I mean, it, it will just mean, you know, we won't do any sort of objective setting or implementation plan until obviously after it's adopted. And I had already told the consultants that it could be another month before that happens. So, thank you.
Well, and as I said when I made the motion, I was just eager to get them going. But if there are board members that want more time with this, I'm not opposed to that.
Um, one of the things I'd like to say, we could do that. One of the things I'd like to say is that I've worked on strategic plans because I love strategic plans. I don't know why. But I've worked on them for years and years and years. And this is a stellar strategic plan. It is really a good one. And I really liked, when I dug down a little deeper in terms of questioning that's where did you, where, where did you get that idea? You know, it came, it wasn't boilerplate. It came very much from very specific things that they heard in staff, that they heard from the community. And that was one of the reasons why I liked delivery strategy so much, was they put more effort, they, they had a plan for engaging the community in a way. And I will say that as the two board members, we were not engaged in any way at all, particularly. We, we listened at the steering committee meetings, but they didn't care what we thought. You know, I mean, I got to fill out that, and I just wanted to reassure people that there was an input from, you know, and the input that they got from staff, you read it up.
I, I don't know. I, I almost felt like I rose to the level of a co-facilitator at our, at our retreat day. But not, not that any of that input went anywhere.
So, I'm not to wrap it up. I'm sure, I, I may not make the September meeting, but I am, I think it's a great program. I would, you would have continued the action item in September and accept it.
I think it'll be at the August board meeting.
August. Yeah, August.
Well, right, maybe I'll be here. Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, so let's take, let's take a brief break and then we'll come back and discuss the budget. Okay, we've reconvened and I am going to start this by talking a little bit about the two sheets that were, eight sheets that were on your table. These are example, you will those, both of them are dated 2021. Neither of them, they are examples. These two, and so is this budget thing. This is not, this is a 20 that goes with this. This is the, this is an example of what we will be budget publishing, the legal, the one that says legal. This is an example of what we'll be publishing. At the time that we published this, this is what our budget looked like at that moment in time that it was published. So if you need to find out, here's the legal and that was taken from the numbers that are on the budget. So this is an example from last year. Does that make sense to everybody? Very helpful, thank you. All right, so what we're looking at today, what the, the, there's a couple of things we're looking at today. But one of the big things that has to happen today is a vote on which of these columns that Amy will use when they get the final, that Amy and et al. will use, Amy and team will use to establish, for when the numbers come in exactly next week, three minutes before she has to get in to be published. She'll know which column to plug them into. So we are going to look at either a 0% to 1% or a 2% growth. Purple pages, there were seven minutes. And the purple pages now is where Amy's going to take over and, and move us forward in terms of taking up where she left off Monday.
Yes, so we're looking, Gita, we're looking at current expenditures on the purple sheet. And we had discussed programs, materials and services and salaries and benefits. So now we're starting with the next section, which is facilities maintenance, which will cover lines 43 through 62. And we're going to talk about these more sections versus go line by line. So as mentioned previously, the items in green are what changed between draft one in June and draft two. And then obviously we have the third column, the 2% scenario as well. So right now, looking at line 43, janitorial, in the 2% scenario, we do have an increase in janitorial of about $9,300. And that would be for some additional carpet cleaning. Our carpets are not in great condition and though we budgeted for each location to have a certain, once at least, this, this would be some additional carpet cleaning if we went with that scenario. We did do some increases across the board for all three scenarios, just as we saw a little bit more of both mileage and vehicle maintenance and outreach vehicles. We've definitely continued to have some, some repair and maintenance there. So those were increased.
I have a question on this. This is confusing me. So the first column shows that we would be spending, let's just take, hang on a minute, let's just take the line 45, okay? So it shows that we'd be spending for mileage and it shows we'd be spending $18,000 for, in the 0%. Then the next column for the 1%, it also shows $18,000. It has that plus 2,000. So is it actually 20,000?
No, no, it's 2,000 over the last draft. So in, in draft one, we had it budgeted at 16,000. Now we've increased it, and that's where I meant, and I apologize, all across the board, meaning all three scenarios were increased by 2,000 based on.
Only 2,000? Not, not 2,000 for me to, but, okay.
Yeah, so, so 18,000 is across the board.
Okay.
From the 16,000 that was in draft one.
Okay, all right. So, okay. All right, so that's making more sense to me.
Okay. And then outreach vehicles, similar, just it was increased, but not different in the 0, 1 or 2%. Just that it was increased over draft one.
Okay. So it's gonna happen no matter what. Okay, I get it. I get it. Okay.
Right, there was, so, so this is kind of, and I'll say it again, we just got some better estimates as, from when we did draft one. Just items that are, we're seeing a little more increase in, so we wanted to do some, some fine tuning there. As we go to the next page, you'll see we do have a few line items that are different in the 2% column. So lines 49, this would be for Hayden. That would be an increase of 12,000 in the Hayden repair and maintenance for parking lot restriping. So that would be a project we do under the 2%.
12,000, no, you reseal the parking lot?
Yes.
It's a big parking lot.
Gee, but twice a year.
I can get a two by four brush. That must be a bit.
Okay, resealing and restriping.
Oh, that makes sense.
And to benefit Randy's city.
Thank you, thank you, Randy.
So yes, I'm sorry, restriping and resealing. And then if we look at line 51 for post falls, we do have an increase of $10,000 there. Again, only in the 2% column. This would be for replacing the flooring in the meeting rooms. So this would be replacing.
Replacing the carpeting?
The carpeting.
You think it was carpeting or hard surface?
Would be replacing with what we have, I mean, equivalent to what we have.
That's the, that's 51 you said?
That's like 51.
This is viewing room? It's $10,000?
Well, exactly. And you consider that with iron surface, that's so much more contemporary, but noisy.
Noisy.
Right, right. And, and we could certainly look at a variety of surfaces. I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, we have, and Hayden Library has a hard surface. Here we have carpet. And then there's advantages and disadvantages to either, or it's always hard for some types of programming and newings. You know, carpet's great because again of the muffling, but then you have like children's programs and craft programs and then the hard surface is easier to clean. So I think it, and we can certainly evaluate, but.
Either way, you need a chunk of money in there. I would ask to evaluate. The hospitals have all gone to the hard surface.
And, and we can certainly evaluate, just. And then line 52, this is for repair and maintenance at Rathram. So this would be an increase of 6,400, again, just in the 2% column. And this would be replacing the ADA door openers. Replacing the ADA door openers. And then otherwise, kind of, there was just some fine tuning, not, not any differences between 0, 1 or 2%. But a few items highlighted in green where again, we just kind of, as we saw some of the utilities increase a little bit, we kind of were better able to estimate that as well. Yeah, so for three, three buildings, we felt comfortable with just a slightly higher estimate. So that is facilities and maintenance.
How about the insurance, yeah, I can.
And that's coming in the next section. Yeah, that, that's in the general operations, so. Okay, so then we'll go to the next section, which is general operations. We did, with the audit engagement letter that was approved on Monday, we just did increase slightly the expense for the auditor. And this again is increased over draft one. So that's why it's highlighted in green. And the other was our ICRMP insurance. We got the letter a week ago. And so it was a higher estimate as well. So we're at 48,402 for ICRMP. Otherwise, you know, things are relatively similar to last year. Some of the differences, we have legal and professional. You know, this last year, we had two big consultant projects, the compensation study and the strategic plan. This next year, we've put in for the facilities master plan, so a similar expense to just one project. So that's why it is slightly less than, than what we used this year. But this also covers a variety of other legal and professional services, so it covers some of our financial systems, IT systems.
Sorry, you need a page then. The ICRMP one, because you know, NICs lost the coverage. ICRMP won't cover many more. So I just made it. Do we have a difference from them as to why the changes are occurring?
No, I, I mean, what they, what they really just said is, you know, here's your estimate for this next year. We try to keep, I think there's a general statement about we try to keep costs reasonable because we know budgets are, you know, limited. But it didn't really, it did not go into any sort of detail. That, I mean, when we get our full kind of insurance coverage statement, but right now it was just literally one letter that said it.
So we've not had any incidents, there was cause.
It was a 5% increase.
We've not had any incidents of precipitating increase other than cost of operation.
Right.
Whereas at NIC, it had $250,000, they said we don't do that again.
I don't, I mean, it's been pretty basic. I mean, we had one member injured this last year. That was it. I mean, thank you. Otherwise, our training and conference travel, that is less than what we budgeted. You'll see our FY '22 estimated actual, our, our training may come in a bit under budget. But we had, I think, budgeted 45,000 this last year because we had the PLA conference. So we're back down to kind of, I think what's been a little more standard is the 35,000 for training. And I believe that's, that's kind of mainly, again, most of these, these items have not changed too much from prior year's budget. But any questions?
I, yeah, I do. And I, I'm sorry, I haven't sat down with this. I'm going to make you babysit me a little bit. But the difference between call, I'm just looking at revenues now and just looking at total revenues, line 20. The difference between column one, the 0% and the 1% is $48,000. And the difference between the 1% and the 2% is another $48,000. So from 0% to 2%, where did we put that $48,000?
Okay, so.
Part of it was in, in, transferred to CARF. Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, so, so if you look in column, if you look in the 2% column, and you look to the very right hand side, it kind of has highlighted in green. And those are the 2% increases. So you can see that there was 9,300 in janitorial, 12,000 in Hayden Library repairs and maintenance, and those are the projects I just went through. And then what we haven't gotten to yet though is then the transfer to CARF of 10,000. So under the 2% scenario, but yes, each, each percent is, a 1% is 48,000, 2% double that, which is 96,000.
Okay, but from the zero to the one, what do we do with that 48,000?
Okay, so that's zero to one. So if you'll look in, so starting in line 30, you'll see that there's a difference in collections.
Okay.
So we did increase from draft one, the 0% scenario by 2,500, but then the 1% is by 3,500. And then you'll see that there's a slight increase in software in the 1% and a slight increase in office supplies in the 1%. And then I think the next big difference then is in CARF. So basically, under the 0% scenario, we have no money transferring to CARF. And then in 1% and 2%, we have 5,500 in 1% and 10,000, 2%.
And, and transferring the money to CARF is to remind everybody, is transferring money to an account that we can roll over and it's for facilities. That's, it's just facilities. It doesn't get, we can't go back and use that for operating expenses, you know, for our daily expenses. It's for investment in our assets.
So, and I know we've had the CARF conversation several times, but would you use CARF money on the carpet? Or no?
So it, it's asset repair and replacement, so capital asset repair and replacement. So, so technically you, if you're doing more of a direct replacement of the CARF, but you could. It's, and so we were already taking a big chunk out of CARF. So that's when, we haven't gotten there yet to the balance sheet. If we, for the Hayden roof, we're taking out 185,000 from CARF. So we do try each year, yeah, really large projects typically would come from CARF. But if there's amounts we can carve out of our operating budget for some facilities, then it does help CARF stretch and last longer so that we're not doing all repairs and maintenance out of.
It isn't easy to build the fund up and with construction or that kind of stuff the way it is, building it up for the big projects like the 185,000 roof, which when we started talking about it was 120,000 a few years ago. So, yeah, we have those. Our facilities are getting older and have those enormous expenses.
Like someday, but we're not sure that'll ever happen. If we were to replace carpet all across the district, you know, that would come out of CARF, but it would be quite a large expense. And when we have some of these others like large HVAC units and roof replacements, that's why I think carpet keeps kind of pushing down. Here in the meeting room, it's like a defined area, so it's not a whole library. It's like, well, maybe we could do, you know, a meeting, you know, out of, out of that versus. I think eventually, like, I don't necessarily like if we do post fall, well, we for sure should have done Hayden. And then we have some other libraries that are newer, so we also need to prioritize carpets. And that's more a long term when we, when we look at that, but, but yeah, that, that expense can technically.
The carpet at Hayden is considerably older than the carpet at post fall. Just saying, they don't get, just because, just because Hayden gets it, doesn't mean post fall should get it.
And I'm right, we would be looking.
You reached for your, you reached for your microphone.
So any other questions on general operations, I can then talk, I guess now we've already jumped to CARF. So that was the, the big difference in. So that was the, the big difference in, there is some difference in each scenario for and capital. Actually, thank you very much. So the big difference, and I apologize because it was here at the end, and because it was included in draft one, so it's not highlighted. So in line eighty-two, not in the zero percent. So there's nothing, no capital expenditure in zero percent. But if we did one or two percent, there's forty thousand there. And that would be for, that would be for the lighting at Post Falls. Yes, yeah, that's the lighting at Post Falls. And what? Interior. So just like we did lighting at Rathram and Apple, kind of upgraded the lighting. LED lighting, Post Falls lighting.
Two percent.
Post Falls lighting has been identified as very poor. And so this would be two, but because it's, you know, four times the size as, as Apple, then it's going to be about forty thousand. So that capital project would just happen in the one percent, or right now, in the budget is just budgeted at the one percent and the two percent. But.
I would like to just comment here and give a shout out to Randy because we went and visited Rathram with their new lighting. It was Randy who pointed out to us that our lighting was bad. We were all okay with it. Rathram is, looks like a different building. It's amazing, it is astounding. And it was great. So the lighting is, I didn't realize how important it was until we got to Rathram.
If you want to look at the lighting issue here, because we put a new bank of lights in near the new book area in front of Wilma's Room. And once you get back outside of where those new lights are, you're like, oh my God.
Oh, okay, so that's a really good way to go. Are you working with a Vista on this?
So yes, I mean, I think we worked with a Vista for Rathram, and then it was.
They had a program.
Hootney Electric. And we did get a grant for. Reimbursement, yeah. So it was, we got a reimbursement.
Right.
Not for the whole thing, but for a portion of the project.
I think the program's still going on.
Eighty-two, line eighty-two is for which facility? The new lighting, that would be? Post Falls. Oh. So now, if you want to, because this will continue the capital project discussion. So if you go to the third page, this is where we did move some of the balance sheet items. So for money that's being spent this next fiscal year, that's coming from not current revenue. So either from CARF or from additional carry. So what we have is, we have two balance sheet line items. The first forty thousand is, there is a project this year that we're not going to get to. It's the Harrison remodel that's estimated at, and then this is a remodel in their storage HVAC area. Well, it's in the HVAC area to create more storage. And that's been budgeted at forty thousand, but we're not going to get to it this year. And so, and we would know that we'll have some additional carry forward. So we're saying that we'd like to carry that project forward to next year. So that's what the forty thousand, and that would be in all three scenarios. And then the second is the CARF, where we would withdraw from CARF, the hundred and eighty-five thousand for the Hayden roof. And that, again, is in all three scenarios. So those two items are basically non-current revenue funds. And so Janelle, and I can let her speak to this, she worked with Bob on how to have those items still reflected in our budget, but to not look like current revenue. And we still have to report to the state every, all the money that we're going to spend. So it still needs to be in our budget, but it does kind of make some of our percentages look a little different when that, those items are included under the current revenues. So in draft one, those two items were included under revenue. They were lines eighteen and nineteen, but we've taken those out and put those down under the balance sheet. Any questions about that? We're trying to make it clear, but I know it's still unclear, basically, by looking at.
We're looking at the capital project section.
And so this now is just, I think, always it's helpful for the board to know all of the capital projects that are happening. And so now this is, regardless of how they're being paid for, here are the capital projects for this next year. So some of this, well, this is all redundant, so to speak. So we have the Hayden roof replacement, hundred and eighty-five thousand, the Harrison remodel, forty thousand.
So you're saying for that remodel, we know we're not going to do it this next fiscal year, or we know we're not going to do it this year?
It's in this year's budget.
Oh, so we're carrying it forward to next year?
Yes, yes. And then we have the LED lighting project at Post Falls. So this is just kind of reiterating those capital projects, but because they're in a few different line items, I think there's been an ask in the past that we list all of the capital projects together. So, so those are the capital projects.
So these are the capital projects that are being looked at for twenty-twenty-three fiscal year?
Yes.
All right, so there's the list right there in front of us. Thank you.
And then, really, now you just have kind of the, the general totals, the funds available for expenditures. And then you can just see, in each scenario, we have current year's revenue. We also have our estimated carry forward, as well as then the CARF. The carry forwards are assigned to a capital project and our CARF that's assigned to a capital project. So those will be, you know, as reported there. This is what we'll need to report to the state. Any questions on? At the very bottom, we just have kind of our cumulative balance for CARF.
I know that I've been looking at this stuff for a number of years. And I know it's not incredibly easy, but I think this is really clear. This is, if we keep using this, I think we might get used to it. And I think it gives, it gives me some real clarity and gives me a solid feeling like, okay, I do know where our money's coming from, and I do know where it's going. And I could actually take this and tell the taxpayer. Only taken a number of years for me. Anyway, so Bob's not here. He was supposed to be here because he was the person, he's the reason that we looked at, added the two percent line, which is surprising because he's not ever been the one in the past who, he always wants to bring us down, you know, so it was kind of shocking. I talked to him briefly, and his whole issue was it's about facilities. It's all about facilities. All the increases are about facilities. And he said, these are getting old, we can't neglect them, they must be looked at. I don't know if there's more to add from that because, Janelle, you spoke with him longer, is that correct? Do you have anything to add, Shad, in terms of what he might say, why he would say? He was all about facilities, and the bigger concern was this page three to pull out balance sheet items away from current revenues and current expenditures. Okay, yeah. Yes.
I would speak to it in terms of facilities just because that's the world we're in. And it's far more costly to delay than it is to step up now and get some of these things done. It only costs more both by time, by cost, and damage that it takes to repair. Roofs, sightings, interior, it just goes on and on. So I'm glad to see the three percent idea. And focusing on facilities is appropriate, even if we don't necessarily use it right quick because we're still figuring out some facilities. Because this could be current revenue.
I wanted to support what Katie was saying because even though I didn't have a chance to talk to Bob with this format, it became very clear to me why he was pushing the two percent. It's real clear that it's the facilities issue. And I don't know that in past years I would have been able to focus as easily as I did this time.
Yeah, oh, sorry, another CARF question. The carpet, I was just curious. This one I actually mean. Would the lighting, the Post Falls lighting be able to come out of CARF, forty thousand? I believe because it's an upgrade, so we're not, no.
It could come out of CARF because CARF is for capital assets. And Tony has stated that upgrading, yeah, or auditor, upgrading the lighting is considered increasing the value and the longevity of the building. And so it is considered capital, so it can come out of CARF.
And, oh, the one thing I did want to point out on page three, I mean, I just alluded briefly that was the cumulative balance of CARF. But you can see that we've actually come a long way in a few years that, you know, there was a period of time when we didn't have much in CARF, but now we have some. I mean, you know, in fiscal year twenty-eighteen, we couldn't have done a hundred and eighty-five thousand for the Hayden roof because we didn't have, you know, half that in our CARF fund. And we have the Hayden roof now, but we have, Post Falls HVAC is getting close to end of life. And we have, and that's going to be another really expensive project, probably not a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's still expensive. So we do have another, a number of expensive projects. So sometimes it's balancing what comes out of CARF versus, again, what comes out of kind of the general operating.
Do you have anything in here for the unexpected? Because something will go wrong that nobody knew was going to happen.
Well, I think, I mean, typically in our carry forward, so we budgeted for Q one. But then, you'll see, I think you look at estimated carry forward reserve for next fiscal year, we have two point one. And I think, well, looked at the Q one budget, I think one point nine, you know, is about what we need for Q one. And so we, I think, if we look at the last several years, we've always had a little bit more than the Q one. But again, if we end up with more than that, and we did get some additional revenue this year, so we'll probably be having an additional budget hearing, you know, after the fiscal year because we had some sales tax that came in higher than anticipated. So some of this additional revenue. We have, if you look at estimated actual under transfer to CARF, I think our original budget was ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight. But we do know that, again, with some of this additional revenue. So we're estimating, but this will come to the board as part of kind of the, when we do the budget hearing, we're just putting in that we probably transfer two hundred thousand additional to CARF as part of that additional service.
What do we trade it? By committing it to CARF. What have we done to ourselves to make it difficult to have the money we need to operate?
I mean, we've still had that Q one and a little bit. And in the last two years, I think we've ended the year with some surplus that was unexpected. Some of that was large donations, some of which are restricted, you know, so some of that. And you'll see there what's less restricted.
And my point, asking is, you know, we want to look at the worst-case scenario. Have we locked ourselves into something or put money in a pocket we can't get to? Tree falls across, and damage is something that we haven't been able to predict.
And.
Insurance has to help us with, anyway.
Right, and, you know, getting money out of CARF, I mean, it does take, you know, a vote or resolution from, on the board, and we do need to say we're doing that. But we've had money invested, so part of our CARF account, if you remember, just recently, we went with a new, because it was over the FDIC insured limit. So some of it's in various CDs, some of which are long-term. But then we have a certain amount that's, that would be much more easily accessible.
So at the end of this year, we're going to have about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in CARF, is that correct? Is that what I'm reading?
Where are you thinking?
You even took balance of CARF on page three at the very bottom line, six fifty-four.
And that's estimated year-end because that's if we do that, that larger-than-anticipated transfer. So so we're going to end at six hundred and fifty-four, and then we're going to take a hundred and eighty-five out.
We're going to take a hundred and eighty-five out, okay. So then that will bring us down to what?
Four. Yeah, forty-four percent.
Okay, okay, so what are we, why are we saving that? And this is a hard question because Vanessa's got a good point. Why don't we just take the money out of CARF for all the stuff that we can right now? Or why are we keeping it in CARF? The only thing that I'm thinking is, I mean, for the things we can, I understand you can't do a lot of stuff. But for the things we can, but I know I don't have Randy's sheet in front of us, which talks about all the things that are ahead. Because there's some really scary big things ahead.
Right, which is what, you know, so there, as I mentioned, there's, there's HVAC units, which are big. But there's also, there could be vehicle replacement. And that's not just necessarily Bookmobile, but it could be. But even if we go with something different than the Bookmobile, it's still going to be a vehicle purchase. And, and those types of vehicles are not cheap.
How much was it? It was, does anybody remember? Oh, I wish John were here. And, you know, because it was, it's a huge number of Bookmobile, you know, if we're to do it.
There also may be some other small remodel projects, too. And so that's also what could come out of CARF. So one thing we're doing with donations here at Post Falls is we're doing a small remodel of the children's area. And that will be done pretty much with donations. But at the same time, we're having an architect at least just look at creating an additional study room and an additional office because we are short some office space in the public area. We're just getting estimates on that. That may not be paid for by the donation, so we may be looking at, well, bringing to the board, would that come out of CARF? Or would that come out of, you know, something else? So there are some remodel projects, the Hayden remodel that we kind of stopped. I don't think we need it quite to the magnitude that it was originally designed at. But that staff area is, they're cramped in there, or super cramped. So could we do something that's smaller, on a smaller scale? So we decided not to revisit that even this year or even this next fiscal year. But these all could also be CARF items, as well as big repairs and replacements.
Because at one point in time, I think that they were looking at the Sandpoint Library, and they were sitting on like a million dollars, you know, for, they didn't know what. But I don't want us to be sitting on money that we don't, you know, or just, you know, just having it there because we, you know, it's cool to have that big bank account, but that we are real, that we're thinking carefully before we ask for a two percent, we're thinking carefully, should we take this from CARF? Or should we go ahead and ask the taxpayers for a two percent more so that we can do that facilities, keep our CARF fund where it is? Because we are looking at, we know that Bookmobile's going to open, burn, it will, it just will.
And I will say, for a library of our size, because we are much bigger than Sandpoint, that other libraries of our size in Idaho, which there's only a couple of others, yeah, have CARF accounts much larger because when you have seven branches, that's seven facilities you're maintaining, and that's, that's a million of other things that go wrong. So really, I think we're just starting to get to where we should be with CARF, with our aging, you know, with our facilities that we have.
If a tree fell on us, could we, if a tree fell, a giant tree fell on the building and wrecked the roof, is that a CARF expense or is that just an accident?
We better.
That's an insurance expense.
I have a question about line thirty, collections. So it's, it's almost thirty-nine thousand dollars a month. And I just, I mean, for somebody that's never ran a library, I don't understand how that is a thing. That seems like a lot of books and e-materials. So is that, how, how is that thirty, almost thirty-nine thousand dollars a month?
Yeah, so I will say, I mean, we, we are ordering materials all of the time. So we do order, you know, books all of the time. E-materials are probably more costly than physical books, but they are popular. So when we do, we do contributions to. So when we do, we do contributions to Overdrive and that's through, that goes through CIN, but we contribute money to CIN that then goes directly to our Overdrive account.
And the CIN is within this?
So, so it would be our Overdrive money to, to CIN. But then we have our dues. I mean, I'm sorry, we have our, there's number, line 68 is actual CIN.
But our donations probably, we're donating directly. If we're just giving CIN a donation for ebooks, where does that go? Is that in collections?
That, that's out of collections. So if we say, yeah, because Overdrive is shared with all of CIN. But when we want to purchase ebooks, then that's coming out of our collections. Now, physical books also comes out of there, but that's, you know, that doesn't have to be funneled through CIN. We purchase those directly. But, but I will say actually, so if you look at the collections line and the percentage of revenue, it's at 8.3. I would say most libraries are 10 to 15% of their revenue goes towards collections. Some even as high as 20. But partially, one of the reasons we're in a consortium is we can actually save quite a bit of money because we don't need to buy everything because we also are in a consortium with Coeur d'Alene Library. And so people, you know, can borrow things from, from Coeur d'Alene as well. So, so I know 39,000 a month seems a lot, but we, we're buying all of the time, you know, whether it's the best sellers or whether it's updating our nonfiction collection or getting in new children's books. Average is out to about that. Now, now, you know, there might be more months that are heavier on ordering than others, but.
Is Overdrive the system that holds the ebooks? And that's within this line item too?
Yes, yes. So it would be, it would be both our physical and then it would be the, the Overdrive as well.
I just know that ebooks are breathtakingly expensive. It's really a shame. I mean, not that that accounts for 39,000. That's just a little thing I'm throwing out there. It just shocked me compared to a paper book. Question, more concern. We have to pick a column today that we're going to use as our advertised budget. If we changed our mind, could we, we could still do that in terms of approved budget?
Yeah. So this is just approving a budget for publication. So the final approval for the budget will be in August. We have our budget hearing on August 11th. And then a week later at the regular board meeting could be when the final approval is. If, so if we have our budget hearing and we publish a budget and we go less, you know, meaning, you know, we picked a one per two, 2% scenario and things change. Basically, if we publish and our budget ends up being less than what we published, then that's what we file with the state. We don't need a new publication, published budget or a new budget hearing. But if we end up going higher, we will need a new budget hearing and a new budget for publication. If we go higher than what's approved for publication. Okay.
So do we make a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept FY 23, 0% growth only annual budget.
Okay. It's been moved to accept FY 23, 0% budget growth only as our, as our starting budget, I guess, as, as budgets. Discussion.
Well, I would agree with that. I think most of us feel like the economy is about to tank. And even Amy just voiced that on our meeting on Monday, that she was concerned the economy may tank. I think now is not the time to burden the taxpayers with higher taxes.
Anybody else?
Given the presentation that we just heard from our admin team regarding the needs of the district, I think it would be downright reckless to not increase a snidge for the projects that were just discussed. And whether or not the economy tanks has nothing to do with the fact that the price of labor and materials and everything is going up. And I, I don't, I don't think we should gamble the district's future on whether or not we think, whether or not what we see in our crystal ball. I think the reality is, is that costs are up, costs are what are on the horizon. And we're not going to be able to continue providing quality services and programs to our community by cutting corners unnecessarily.
I'd like to point out that there is the estimated growth amount of 100,000. So that is up from last year. I know that's not higher taxes. That's the, the new people coming in. But that is a, that is an estimated 100,000. And if some of these projects really need to get done, we can take from existing line items and/or some from CARF.
Yeah, the two major projects would be, are already slotted to come out of CARF. So wouldn't need to increase taxes for that anyway. And the other ones could come out of CARF.
I, I mean, I should have jotted down more notes when Amy was giving her presentation. The janitorial, for example, cannot come out of CARF.
No, I'm saying that things can be moved around. Even the collection can be shaved off a bit because last year it looks like it was 7.9. And even with the 0%, it goes up to 8.3%. So even that is rising from last year. So I'm saying from other little areas, things can be, money can be moved around still if there's projects that absolutely have to be done.
Having sat through a lot of public meetings with the, the public budget hearings, the public cares about collection and cares about our collection and making sure that we're keeping up and having a good, healthy collection. I mean, as it is, when you look at those percentages that we have devoted to the books on the shelves and the materials for our patrons, I, I find those percentages very low. And I think that members of the public would agree that those are very low. So when I hear you saying, well, let's just take even more money from collection and put it somewhere else from our collections, that, that, I mean, at the end of the day, a library consists in large part on what materials the public has access to. And again, that's another area where costs are increasing.
And, and when we go by percentages, which I absolutely love, there's certain percentages that we have no control of. Especially like insurance, salaries, the, all the employee, the health benefits. Those percentages, they can just keep going up like crazy. So necessarily the other ones start coming down because there's only so much of percentage that there's, that you can have in a 100% budget. So as they go up, other ones have to come down. No matter how much money we bring in.
Jared, I think we all wish we could hold prices down. I'm not sure, I don't think that's realistic management on our board's part now with the growth that we're experiencing. And it's predicted to occur, then we need to have money for the growth function. From the building management point of view, that's just, it's foolish not to have money to do the things we need to do. Have some reserve and think, potentially get ready for the ongoing growth that's, that's predicted. It's already happened. Are we even keeping up with the growth right now in our community? From what I've seen in the census. And that's only one snapshot in time. So I believe we should spend the 3%, 2%, sorry. I'd like to go for three. I'll go for two.
Well, I know it's uncommon for governments to have, or a government entity to have the, the thought process of making do. But it's something that's always made America great is to be thrifty and instead of spin thrifts. The library doesn't need to be all things to all people. It doesn't need to be an ever growing behemoth. Like the idea of the, the library of things, the chainsaw and the snowshoes. And I mean, those sound really cool, but is that really the proper role of a library? And it just seems like we're spending so much money to accommodate people's sexual preferences as if that's the highest priority of the library. We can't accommodate sex children. I think perhaps we could spend less on the latest fetish thing that has little worth as, as far as popular books. Yeah, I just, I don't think that it's just like, oh, let's spend, 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 spend. And it doesn't matter what we charge the taxpayers because everything's about the bling and the glitz. I think that we need to be realistic and we need to be Americans.
I cannot stand not to rise to that because I think it's foolish management when you do not, particularly for facilities. We will pay for it later if we don't pay for it now. We'll pay more later. It costs more later. And it's just not good of a business operation, which we've spent 30 years doing. And that is being sure that we've done preventative maintenance, that we have some reserve for the things that you don't predict to happen. The ADA requirements that are coming along. And most of all, consumer experience in a library is, is fundamental to what libraries are about. Access to them, contents in them, and buildings that are safe for folks to be in. And that we don't go backwards by not spending the money now, which will be better spent than if we wait for troubles to kind of happen later. I don't see in resealing and restriping the Hayden argument for lighting or ADA door openers or, I don't see bling. I don't see these, I don't see bling in the libraries. I guess part of it too is that we've been talking about these things for a number of years. And that's the difference. We've done that, Katie. And Right. We have been looking at knowing what the needs are for several years and, and, and putting them off, putting them off. We're not covering all the needs. And I have also been through the building projects and through, I mean, the replacement of library vehicles is breathtaking. So I, I have a huge amount of respect for Bob and his, and his look at the, he, he changed how we look at fiscal things. And for him to come forward and say that he felt that it was important that we look at that made a huge difference to me. It was breathtaking to me, but it made a huge difference to me because I feel that he has, over the years that we've worked with him, he worked hard to make us look carefully at our budget. So it would be, when he's suggesting that we go for the 2%, it was very surprising to me. And I listened to him. I didn't have a long time to be able to talk to him. But when he was talking about, all about facilities and I was like, all right, I can look at that. Because I am concerned. I have looked at these facilities and I know how old they are. And I also know what happens to the HVAC system in both Hayden and Post Falls and it's scary. And it isn't something that you get to, you get to make a difference about. Make a, you don't, you don't, you can't be like, oh, well, we'll do that next year. Not, not when heating or cooling goes down. So I'm I think that for us, not to put, ask the taxpayers to help us with some of the facilities issues. I don't know where it needs, I don't know where it needs to be, but to ask them for none, I think is not being realistic about what's needed for this system. So.
Well, I would also say that regardless of the budget that we approve here, the impact to an individual homeowner cannot be predicted. You can't tell us that not increasing our budget is not going to increase taxes. That's all dependent on assessed values and the, the taxing as a whole that is then divided via a percentage across the entire populace of Cootney and Shoshone counties. So individual taxpayers may not be affected one way or the other, depending on what we do with this budget. I don't, I don't know if you understand exactly how that works. But also by increasing the homeowner's exemption, most people are going to be paying less taxes, those that live in their homes and are able to take a homeowner's exemption. So I know it sounds good to say, I'm, you know, standing up and saying, no more taxes, don't increase taxes. And I'm, I, I hear you. I, I don't, I don't, I don't want our taxes to go up. In fact, I don't think our taxes ultimately will go up. I, I keep getting refunds from the state of Idaho that don't make sense to me. So I, I don't, I, I just think that the idea that you are holding the line is short sighted when we have a district that must run and should run well to do what it is intended to do.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to point out that regardless of what happens with the economy, which is a guess, depending on what economist you talk to, the growth in the area has not slowed down, not predicted to slow down. And this static amount is divided out over additional homes. It is entirely possible that taxes will not go up at all.
I was just going to say, so last year, I think when we were going through the budget process, we talked a little about, there had been a House bill last year that had changed the property tax. And what it had affected was the percentage of growth. So we used to be able to take 100% of new construction and last year only 90% of new construction. And so just, just to kind of, for, for reference, the growth number in 2019 was 117,000. In 2020, it was 137,000. And then last year for our 2021 budget, it was 91,000. We've estimated at 100,000, but that really is just an estimate. We'll find out on Monday. But, so, so the growth isn't necessarily keeping up with growth based on that we now are only able to take 90% of new construction and not, not 100%. And so we, I, I do agree, you know, our philosophy, and I think this has just been the change the last year or two, to start at 0% and then see what we would do with the other scenarios versus started, I think prior practice had been start at 3% and then, you know, work backwards. So that's where we started. We started at 0% and said, this is what we could do. And then really, we're being very cautious in proposing the 1%. But I think upon, you know, meeting with Bob, that's where we presented the 2% scenario. But I, but I just wanted to say that, that that growth actually has been going down. And so it does, and then when we have also taken 0% the last two years. So in terms of the base, it's staying more static than, than it used to. And so what the base does is allow us to do those operating expenses. We've been fortunate for two years to have a little bit of extra at the end of the year, but those were the only good for one-time projects, which helps with some of the facilities, but not the facility's maintenance, just the facility's replacement or special projects. I think Randy's come to me two or three times in the last six weeks with, hey, I know we had this repair and it was supposed to be this much and now it's this much. And so, you know, we have the discovery bus in right now and it's four times what we were expecting, you know, the, the cost to be. So really things are just, they are going up. And, and so I, I think this is really just, we want to be able to keep up and not have things run down. And in terms of having, I mean, our collection, it's been pretty static. That 465, 467, that's about what we've spent if I go back several years. One thing that came out in the community survey was people want to see more books. I mean, they didn't say what type. That was not specified at all. It's that they wanted to just have more selection in the collection. Also, we've seen our, in our library loan numbers just skyrocket. So people were not necessarily always having here what, you know, people are borrowing. And now there are always going to be reasons why we use a library loan, right? For some of those more niche things, but that's something we need to delve into deeper. So I would say our collection, I, I would certainly be hesitant to, to cut that. Our library things, we've even cut that budget as well. So we're not necessarily looking at some of these large, big ticket items. And then I will say, you know, our percentage of items for LGBTQ books, that's very small. It's 0.6% of our whole physical collection and ebook collection. So we're So we're not spending hardly any money.
Any more discussion? We're getting close to time to either have a motion to extend the meeting or we can't, we've got to vote on this.
Jump in again, because I would like to think that, and I believe we all are, eager not to spend any more money than necessary. But the, the experience we have in the business community building buildings, we've done it for 30 years in this community, and even now the supply chain, even if you need to have something because you can't function in HVAC system, can be months. Building we just finished, where we could, we bought some materials ahead of time to hold the cost, the number went up too much, but meant we had to have money at the front end to do it, but we could guarantee holding that cost. And it turned out to be a very fortunate situation. So I think the, the perception of spending money, to me, is mostly by, determined by appropriateness of that spending. Is it reasonable to be doing it now? And I had the same thought about the $39,000 monthly collection number. That's scary. That's a thousand dollars a day.
It is.
But.
Funny you didn't break it down, though.
And I'm sorry I did because, no, I just think our business, library, is having a collection for people to come use in a building that's safe, that is planned ahead, so that we're not spending money that we didn't need to because we didn't go active maintenance of buildings. Our experience with HVAC systems now is scary, just can't get them. And we know we're on borrowed time with some of these things along the way. I, I believe 2% is a wise, responsible, not irresponsible, management tool that our board should adopt.
Okay. I, I would like to say, though, that that collection number has remained static for 100,000 years. It's just like, it's, it's just always that. And it's, and that's kind of breathtaking that it's remained so static. Anyway, it's, is it, if we're not, if we're done with discussion on this, then I would bring us back to the motion, which is, it has been moved to accept the 0% column as our budget. So all those in favor? All those opposed? I'm going to go nay, too. I am very concerned about. So then we need to decide on either, so then we need another motion to decide on something else.
Can I make a motion to extend the meeting?
Sure.
Till 5:15?
Whatever.
That'll maybe hasten the next 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, it's been moved to extend the meeting till 5:15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah.
Okay, so what else do we want?
Um, I, ever since Bob implemented the, let's start with a 0% budget and then see if we really do need to increase it, the, it has really resulted in what I thought Bob wanted to result, which is for us to take a very hard look at, do we need to take an increase or can we get by with a 0% increase? Now, our staff has done our request and they've come to us and said, yes, we can get by with a 0% budget. Here it is. But if we could have these things, here's what we can do with it. And again, like I said before, what they want to do with that money is not, you know, frivolous in any way, shape, or form. It is not frivolous. So I just, for the benefit of those of you that have not been part of this struggle, it is a struggle and it should be a struggle, and it should never be a given that we're increasing it, or it should never be a given that we're not going to increase it. And we didn't increase it the last two years, yeah, out of recognition of the fact that COVID has been hard on a lot of people, a lot of people weren't working, a lot of people have been on unemployment, and, you know, our sales tax numbers got bigger because of Washingtonians coming over here and spending money in Idaho, and we didn't have to put as many services and programs out there. But, but things are back, people want our services and our programs, and I'm, I'm looking at Karen and she's nodding because when I read these board reports and I see what the library is doing and what our community is coming to and what they want to see, they want more. They want more. That's what came out of the survey, and I want to be able to give them more. And, and we're talking pennies, we're literally talking pennies.
But I need these motions.
I, I, I don't know, Judy, you make the motion. I don't know what you want to do.
Oh, I, and that's why I tried to speak to it. I move that we accept the 23 budget at 2%.
Okay, it's been moved to accept the 23 budget at an increase, at an increase of 2%. Discussion.
See, I probably would have done something crazy like one and a half. Just, just to throw a wrench in it.
Okay, discussion.
I, I am probably still not on board with that, and it's mostly because CARF, which I know, I, I know how important it is, there's still going to be 429 approximately thousands in CARF after 185 in the 440. So I think some of these other projects that can be out of CARF, maybe should be out of CARF, and, and maybe I'm naive, but I think it is important for taxpayers to see that things aren't going up year after year after year across the board. I know we didn't for the last two years, but every other tax district goes up. Also, and I know that the people of the community want more, but the one that say they want more is still a small part of the community, if that makes sense. It's not everybody paying the library or supporting the library that says, that even uses it, number one. I mean, it's important to have it, obviously, but all these people aren't using it, and the ones that say they want more is probably even a smaller percentage. I think that the, the library gives them quite a bit already, so.
Yeah, all the other taxing districts except for the Post Falls Highway District, which reduced their budget by one and a half percent last year.
We've reduced ours by 3% for two years.
I don't think that's reducing. I think that's just not.
Yeah, that would be leaving it the same. They actually reduced their, they dropped the amount they asked for.
Yeah, we did, too.
And we just took 0% last year, that's not, so what I'm saying is like theirs was a negative one and a half percent rather than leaving theirs as.
Oh, I wonder why not, I wonder why they did that. What, Eric? All right, so Woody, all right, so it's been moved to accept, so what I'm wondering is, we obviously have, you know, we have the 0%, we have the 2%, does anybody want to, do we want to meet at 1%?
Um, I was, I was in some ways being facetious, although, you know, I did think it would be kind of ironic to make Janelle run the numbers at one and a half percent. But part of my thought process is, again, this is not us accepting the budget, this is us saying, this is the budget that we're publishing. This is right, and maybe I need to have Judy's motion said out loud again, but we are approving a budget for publication. And so we are approving a budget for publication. So part of my thought process in going with the 2% is then we can, it will be published at 2%. This is a proposed, this is, you know, this is not what we are doing, this is, we have, we have, we are publishing a budget that proposes a 2% increase. Then members of the public will come and talk to us, and, you know, I reserve the right to change my mind. But at this point in time, I am on board with publishing, approving a budget for publication that incorporates a 2% increase, which again, that does not mean that we're taking a 2% increase. It means that's what we are putting in the paper for people to come and discourse about.
Thank you for that clarification. I should have asked for the budget, for the motion to reflect that. Would you like to?
Yep.
Respeak the motion that what you are proposing.
I move that we present for publication, budget the reflection 2% increase.
Okay, so then that's the motion that is now 2% publication, a budget that reflects a 2% increase. Question? Do we have any more numbers to come in that?
Yeah, so that's the next piece of this.
Right.
So on, on Monday, and just to clarify, that's when we'll get our growth numbers. We're hoping we might have something for urban renewal or just a verification that might be either zero or something.
And that might be a game chaser if we get some urban renewal money, you know?
Because there could be something there. We don't know, but we should get the final growth numbers on, on Monday, so that 100,000 will not be 100,000. I mean, because it usually comes in, not just that general of a number, right, comes in more than that. If it's lower, it could be higher. Best guess.
Okay. Did you have some, were you, did you have your hand on them?
Nope.
Okay, so it's been moved to approve the FY '23 2% budget for publication. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and I would approve it, I would say yes for publication. So I'm sorry we couldn't come to an agreement together, but we have, all together, but we have time to discuss this, and it will be, our Tuesday meeting will be seeing exact numbers and where we're at. And then one year, we got $70,000 in a URL. URL?
URL.
You are, you are, you are what?
Urban ID, yes, the UID.
D, right, I knew that. URL is a little different. All right.
Computer thing, right?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I want to finish up. It's good that we all care this much and we're trying to figure a way to be cost effective. And I thank you for everybody's on the ring and hand wringing, and look forward to having you find a lot of money between now and Monday.
Okay, anything? Did you have something more?
Not about the budget, about the next thing.
Okay, okay, okay. We've got six or something like that. That's special and regular meeting dates and action item. And then it was Regina who asked for, we need to complete our discussion concerning the director's evaluation. And so that we have to set a date, a look at a date for that. And it would be good if you were here, Judy, and so it'd be at the beginning of August.
Yeah, I think so.
This is a special meeting, it will be an executive session for 444, it could be, say, the 11th.
Oh, that's a budget hearing.
Oh, that's a budget hearing, don't have it in my calendar. Can we do it afterwards?
Or before?
About, a budget hearing, usually that's what happens, an hour, so.
It depends on how many public show up.
So if we met before the budget. But if we met before the budget hearing, then, then for sure, no matter how long the budget is, yeah, what happens for everybody then? I can do that. The six o'clock budget hearing on the 11th, right?
Right, so I guess I'd propose, I don't know how long it's going to take, four o'clock, yeah.
That's, that's what we had to discuss, the executive meeting last month, right?
To evaluate the director.
And we're almost done, weren't we?
You might only need an hour.
Right, so we also don't want to be still occupying the room. I mean, I think we want, I mean, yeah, I, I would almost suggest that we do it after instead of before, unless you were going to do it at four o'clock such that we could, you know.
My concern is that it might, right, that we might.
The budget hearing, we need to be.
How about 4:30?
That's how I do schedule, Regina.
Oh, let me look. I'm, sorry, I don't have to close up. I just thought we were like this close to being done last time.
We have to. But yeah, it is sometimes more and more. We better have more chocolate for the next meeting.
More chocolate? Okay, I agree with that.
More chocolate for the next meeting.
4:30 is fine with me.
Done.
And is there any more material to be sent to us in anticipation of that meeting?
Do I need to reserve?
I can send, I did start to, and I'm almost done typing up the evaluation form, so I can email that in the next few days.
I think that'll warm me up for where we were.
Did, and, okay. So we're going to have it at 4:30, is that, is everybody's okay with 4:30?
No.
Okay.
And Katie, just so I'm clear, this, the budget hearing is on the 11th, and then we will take the budget up on the 18th?
Your board.
At the next regular board meeting, is that right?
If the budget hearing's on the 11th, we have a budget for publication, but we said for publication. And that's the budget we'll be discussing at the budget hearing?
So, so I guess that's my question, do we need a special meeting to approve the budget? Isn't there a timeframe? I'm just trying to remember, Janelle, how it works.
I think, I think that this is right, right. I know, this is, I'm a little, but I think this is right.
Yes, we have had a third meeting in August that was a week after the regular meeting. I think the thought was.
Learn more from the budget hearing, we had to factor that into what.
Right, right, but then I think we were also getting into some difficulty to have the full board together. So if the full board can meet together for a special meeting at the end of August, but I think that's.
Okay, so we have a published budget, then we have a budget hearing that people come and talk to us about, then we have a meeting.
We still have to adopt some.
Then we have a meeting, and then we have a budget approval if we need to, right?
Can't we do that at the regular board meeting?
That's my question.
Yeah, and then there's the, okay.
Yes, yes.
Wait.
Because I think you were going to be out of town. I think that's the whole.
I am. No, I don't mind, I can go to the Hill and call in if it needs a budget, okay. Was it, okay, was, okay, the regular.
It would have been the 25th if we kept with how we've done it in the past.
Oh, that was the budget hearing?
That would be the budget approval meeting.
Oh, that was the budget.
And I'm not available on the 25th.
That's the third day.
So the thought was, even though we've typically is, could you have, but it would mean if staff needed to present a different scenario based on what was at the budget hearing, right? But.
Okay, so at the budget hearing, we will hear about how, how people feel about this published budget. At our regular meeting, if we try to, we could probably do our budget, and that could be our budget approval meeting if, but we would have to really carve out a lot of time because there may be a lot of discussion.
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is if we haven't discussed at all at the hearing, then we haven't changed the budget at all, you know what I mean?
I know, that's what this regular meeting was for.
Right, so, but here's a proposal that may or may not work, is what about at the, well, you already have a special meeting, I was going to say at the budget hearing, adding a half hour for discussion.
Afterwards.
After.
Because we've heard an hour process.
Yeah, I think that the, in the, in the past, it hasn't, if we put the budget approval on the same day as the public budget hearing, we haven't had adequate time to take feedback into account, is historically how we have addressed it.
The other thing is, is that we could make our regular meeting a little longer to incorporate that discussion.
Wouldn't even need to happen.
Well, I think based upon the vote right now, it may, probably will need to happen.
And I think that can all happen at the regular meeting, I'm just saying, we may not have an additional draft to share with you because the board hadn't met yet after the budget hearing. So let's say people come, they talk about it, and they, whatever, there's something in the budget hearing that changes the board's mind. So maybe you wanted us to go back and tweak these line items, right? We won't.
So we could take a little bit of time after the year, after the hearing and.
Yeah, we can discourse about it, it just wouldn't be an action item.
And if we wanted them to change it, we could, we could have them, so we could have numbers, different numbers at our regular meeting. What do you think? Are you guys willing to stay a little after six?
Yep. Yep, yep, we're all here anyhow.
Okay, so we'll start, we'll start the meeting, then we'll.
4:30.
Then we'll pause for the budget hearing, then we'll come back to the meeting.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Ew, this looks like a complicated day. All right, does that work for everybody? Okay, so we did that, thanks.
I'm so glad I'm not the only one that didn't quite remember how it went.
Oh, yeah. So you're.
Okay.
So we're botching out from 4:30.
Right, but we. Right, but we still have not done executive session for director's salary.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah, we have. I got it, I got it, I got it. And none of that is an action item. All of that is just written down in the calendar. You got what you're doing on the 11th. Okay, cram it on.
The calendar had a question on today's agenda. It says that this calendar, it says that our August meeting is in Post Falls. Did we change that or was it a mistake?
Yeah, I think a few months ago, Katie and I changed it to Hayden because we'll have our Hayden library report that day. We had to postpone it because we didn't have a Hayden manager, I think back in February or March when they were supposed to. So, um, so yes, I'm sorry, the August meeting, August 18th will be at Hayden.
What's that?
It is at Hayden.
The regular board meeting, not the budget hearings.
Be really super if I remember not to go to Post Falls.
And then maybe you're gonna send us the materials we need for our executive session evaluation.
Yes.
Before we look at the budget, same day. But there's no other materials for that budget because that's the budget hearing. And based on whatever happened there, we may have another round of stuff, which we decide after the meeting.
I would like to move that we adjourn.
Okay, if we adjourn, all those in favor? Alright, thank you all for coming.